Okay, well, welcome everyone. We're gonna call the meeting to order. So the first thing is to review and approve the agenda, and at least relative to what the agenda says online, there are a couple of changes. One is that it doesn't list general business and appearances, and we're going to definitely add that. And thing number two is that there's a... Oh, should I... Should I keep talking? How are we doing?
I'm fine over here.
Oh, okay. Well...
How are you doing in the rooms?
I could just... I could use my teacher voice. I don't think you want that in the mic, though. Fascinating.
We have EMTs here if something happens.
We're gonna give it a minute to see if this works out.
This is funny, because I'm afraid I'm not gonna need it once.
I know. Oh, okay. Hey there. Can you... Is that any better? No? Not any better? I feel like I can hear a little bit of...
Is your volume...
No? Not yet?
No, I mean, does he have...
Yeah, I don't know. I'm gonna keep talking as if there's, you know, something is going to change with the volume. Yes, I could do that also. Okay, well, we're gonna keep moving forward. Okay, so we're adding general business and appearances, and the second thing that we're gonna add after that is there's a grant application that we got an email about this afternoon, and so we'll take that up immediately after before... Or after the general business and appearances and before the budget. And just to explain, the budget process team, just so you know... I mean, I guess I could save this for that conversation, but I'm thinking about the budget as being in three parts, and you could think of it as like the... Just like the layout that we were given, there's sort of the core budget, there are the things that are recommended in the budget that was in that green section that are some additions or changes, and then there's the last section that are things that... That was the yellow section, and we'll take that up last. Okay, so...
We were planning to do that down there, too.
Yeah, so when we get to that part, we'll move to the center table. And we're gonna use the whiteboard, and I'm really excited about it. Okay. So without any objection, we'll consider the agenda approved. All right, so general business and appearances. This is a time for any member of the public to address the council on any issue that is otherwise not on our agenda, and if you would keep your comments to two minutes or so. And tell us who you are, even though we know who you are.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Andrea Standor. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, and members of the city staff. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you just for a few minutes tonight. As I said, my name is Andrea Standor. I live on 25 Liberty Street, and I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of a group of Montpelier registered voters who continue to have significant concerns about the proposed parking garage. In pursuit of those concerns, we are availing ourselves of our public democratic process and seeking to place an article on the ballot for the March 5th, 2019 town meeting election. We recognize the concerns of many citizens, and especially our downtown merchants and businesses regarding issues with parking in Montpelier. Our goal is to seek the best possible future for the city. And therefore, we're presenting the content of our petition to you tonight to facilitate dialogue and encourage a spirit of civic engagement. We've begun collecting signatures, and we intend to present the requisite number of valid signatures by the deadline of Thursday, January 24th, 2019, at 5:00. And then, if I may, I'd like to just read you the contents of the petition. "We, the undersigned legal voters of the City of Montpelier, Vermont, hereby petition the Montpelier City Council to place the following article on the warning for the annual town meeting to be held on the first Tuesday of March, Tuesday, March 5th, 2019. This petition is filed pursuant to the Montpelier City Charter. We certify that we are presently voters of this city. The article to be placed on the warning to read as follows. Shall the City Council withhold spending of the $10.5 million as authorized in Article 1 of the November 6th, 2018 official ballot until the following shall occur? Number 1: That for the benefit of the downtown merchants and other businesses, there is a written commitment by the city to provide sufficient remote parking spaces and transportation services to the downtown during the construction phase." And I have copies of this. I'll give it to everybody. "That it is..." Number 2: That it is clearly shown that there will be safe, continuous public sidewalks and bike lanes along the road leading to and from the entrance of the garage from State Street. That the comprehensive traffic study required by the Development Review Board in its December 13th, 2018 decision is completed immediately, not one year later. That soil remediation on the site is completed, and the findings and cost of this work be made public. That the bid process is completed, with the costs of the successful bid being within the bond limits. That all state and municipal permits and subpermits, including water quality permits if required, have been issued, and any appeals resolved. That a public report projecting operating costs and revenues over the expected life of the garage, including paydown of the bond, is completed by an independent accountant who has experience in public parking garage operations." And I'll be happy to pass these around. There's more than enough there for sections. So, as I said, our intention tonight was simply to put this on your radar, let you know what we're doing, and go forward.
Thank you, Andrea.
You're welcome.
May I ask just one...
Yeah, go. Go ahead.
Technical question. Number 3, about the traffic study that'd be done now instead of a year from now? I think the goal of the year from now is to see the before and after.
I... We understand that from reading the DRB decision, but I think there are concerns...
So I was just curious what the rationale was for doing it now, because there will be no additional traffic or no change to measure, so...
Right. I'm not the expert to speak to this, but I think our concern has to do with inadequate information about the current situation and how things are gonna proceed.
And I would just also love to add that I would love to meet with any of the, you know, folks in your group who are concerned and in the spirit of like, you know, what can we be doing? You know, how can we be addressing these concerns? I mean, I appreciate that you have an itemized list, like, this is actually very helpful. So, thank you.
I just have a quick procedural question. I think this is probably more for Bill. So if the requisite number of signatures are secured, then the petition comes to the council? And is it an automatic addition if the requisite number of signatures are added? Because that was my understanding.
I think so, although the... We'd have to look at what... There are certain things the voters can and can't do, so I don't... To what... If there are those... And I don't know, I'm not in a position to opine on any of these I just saw, but if so, if there were things that were not within the purview of the voters, it might have to be considered advisory or something like that, so we'll get legal opinion on this.
Okay.
But my short-term presumption is that would have to go on the ballot.
Okay. And that would all... All of that would be contained in the charter if that provision existed, or is that contained elsewhere?
Well, for... Well, I don't... Again, for instance, but there are certain things that... You know, voters can appropriate money, they can do certain things. There are certain specific administrative things that voters can't do, and so you can have them on the ballot, but it doesn't mean that the city council has to follow them. So...
So, okay, so I guess maybe that clarifies. So either way, it's gonna go on the ballot.
Yeah.
But the question then becomes which of...
How binding is it?
Right, okay.
And to what extent is it binding?
We can find that out.
Paul Delaney is looking at the actual petition right now.
Oh, great.
My understanding is that it wouldn't be binding.
My understanding is that it would not be binding, and as such, it only needs the 300 and some signatures. But since it's not a moneyed item, it's not gonna be binding, and it also... There's also the question, honestly, because it reads as a rescission, so it, you know, I think we need to wait for what Paul says to see if it's even... Can be on the ballot, but if it can, then all it takes... It does not take approval from the council at all, the way our charter is worded.
I believe the wording that we've chosen on our petition is not a rescission. It's simply a list of things that we feel need to happen before the money is spent.
Well, the reason I asked Paul to look at is it basically says, "We won't do what we voted on until these other conditions are met," and he might consider that a rescission. I just need to wait to hear from him.
Regardless of whether it's binding or whether it's a rescission, I...
And I presume it would be on the ballot.
Yeah.
I can't imagine why it wouldn't be.
So, but regardless of all that, I would still like to meet with any or...
And our goal, we're using this process because we think it's a good process for educating people, engaging people in a dialogue and a discussion about these concerns. So that's our purpose.
Great.
Thank you for the time.
Yes, thank you. Jeff?
Are there extra copies in case?
There are a bunch, yeah. And to answer the question, in addition to what's in the charter, there is a fair amount of Vermont case law on the ability of residents to petition for things to be on the ballot, and what the effect of those is that I had to work on in a previous ballot initiative 25 or so years ago, so... So there's case law out there that...
Fair enough. We can find this out.
I also just wanna make sure that we are very public about this, because I think... I mean, everybody knows where I stand on the parking garage anyway, but I just wanna make sure that that... When we get sort of like... If we can put together a document that has all of the legal references for the public to read as well, because what I don't wanna do is set expectations that the council doesn't intend... You know, I just wanna be fully transparent in what the council's gonna do. I think everybody knows what I would say, but I just wanna make sure that everyone has access to the legal authority and what that all means, so that people know, like, what this translates to, like pragmatically speaking, in their day-to-day life as residents here.
Okay.
Yeah, and you look at these, I mean, we couldn't start without permits anyway. For example, number 6, so that goes without saying. Number 5, the same thing.
Well, let's...
So I'm just saying, because a lot of these are things that you have to do anyway.
We have... Yeah. Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yes.
And it's not that we're not interested.
No, I hear you. This is actually incredibly helpful.
Which is time, right?
Fair. Okay, so, all right, so moving on to the grant application, which got sent around this Theoretically, this could be a consented item, but it's only one item, so is any... Do you wanna tell us anything about this?
So this is a pollution control grant that we're applying for through the State of Vermont and Department of Environmental Conservation. It's not that we've been aborted yet, this is part of the application process, but it does require our city council to authorize us to submit the application and to name me as authorized representative for interactions with them in the event that we succeed in that application. So this, all the money, if we were to receive anything under this grant, would be used towards the wastewater recovery facility project to reduce the total cost from that $16.75 million.
Yeah, that'd be great. All right, any discussion about this?
I move we approve it.
Fantastic. Second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. All right, so on to the budget. So let's take a moment to transition ourselves to down at the table, and we'll pick it up from there.
By saying that, you mean you want us all to physically move to the table?
Yes, we're all physically going to move down there.
Connor, you wanna bring those peanut butter cups?
This looks like about the whiteboard.
You need to come this way. Where is it?
The whiteboard?
Yeah, right there.
Oh.
Are you putting that chair in there?
Do you want us to elevate it somehow? Should we bring a couple chairs?
Well, it's time.
I think that's why it didn't sink into me that like...
Make sure we have an off everybody.
Yeah, because it's down there.
That's right.
This is out of my normal range of... Okay.
My box makes sense.
Not really, but we can have that work.
Excuse me.
Connor, do you have a preference?
I think we should have done presentations first.
Yeah.
No, I don't wanna move back.
It's not that hard.
You think we should move back?
Why?
Oh, because we're gonna have a couple of presentations.
But they're blue right there, right?
Well, this is... Mine wasn't really a presentation, it was just so we could have... If I could keep the running tally, if everyone could see it.
Forgot the presentation part. Tony? What do you think, team? Should we...
I think stay. I wanna be here.
Doug, Doug, Doug in.
And I can come and go as department heads.
Okay.
Okay, so first of all, can you all hear us okay?
Very well.
Yeah.
We have more than two?
We're gonna use those later. But if we put that...
There should be three, you said?
Oh, there's only two.
I see two.
Oh, what's on the floor? Here?
Here.
Here we go.
Okay.
Hello? Check, check. Okay. All right, well, so I think we wanted to start things out with just hearing a little bit from a couple department heads. So I know Tony is here, and I don't see Jeff. Oh, but Alex is here. Okay.
Jeff is coming.
Jeff is coming. Well, we'll at least go with... So can we invite Tony in? Hey, Tony, are you ready? Did you wanna plug in, are you?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Oh, it's so weird to be down here.
I like that.
Well, we'll make it work.
Oh, you brought your own laptop?
Yeah.
Do you wanna do that? Well, either that or just... Can you just add it to this? Can you just put it on this flash there?
Yeah.
And then we can just stick it in?
You might sign this one?
Yes. While you and I are signing it together, so...
Then we don't have to set up another... Sergeant Cochran. I was gonna say, I recognize you. What is this clean-shaven man? Wow.
I've got some scary pictures of the past.
Yeah.
I take it you had a full beard.
Yeah, very full beard.
The chief will introduce Sergeant Cochran, but he was undercover for five years, so I'm not recognizing him. First, I took me a second to know who this was.
They're not super effective, it's like...
That's why I saw you. You're in here.
She said I couldn't come back till they were healed.
I know. Brother said I turned it all wrong.
But I'm back.
It doesn't surprise me, coming from him.
So our number one rule is we always make sure our tech works, but obviously, we didn't follow that.
Rules are like basically made to be broken.
Says the prosecutor.
I don't know how I feel about that as a writer of rules.
Yeah, right. Seems like lately, there are more exceptions than rules.
I was gonna say, I watched Rosie Viscerally. I'm a rule follower.
Should we take a three-minute break?
That's a great idea.
Okay. Let's take three minutes.
I'm gonna open my candy bag.
Take a peanut butter cup break?
So you'll feel obligated to hang out right here.
I'll start off with...
Okay, go ahead, take away.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. First of all, I would like to reintroduce Detective Sergeant Wade Cochran of Montpelier Police Department. Wade has been covertly assigned to the Vermont Drug Task Force the past five years. Today is day one. I didn't recognize they walked in without the beard and everything else, and some other jewelry, I think. So, but as you'll see, this is a very important, calculated plan that we have had for some time as we reintegrate, you know, the loss of this, of having somebody assigned to the Drug Task Force, but the restructuring of our investigative division based on what we are currently facing. So it's to support patrol to get back to what we also... It's made us, I think, so effective in our community, and we wanna do it all because the community is asking us to do it all, and so this is only... This should be... We'll go as quickly as you folks wish, so...
Is the volume okay for people?
So first of all, you know, we used the additional police officer, and quite frankly, I'm simply trying to get us back to our original authorized strength that we did have back when I first took over as police chief in 2007, and that was getting us up to 17 officers. Several years ago, there was some serious budget challenges in the city, and there were cuts made to several departments, the fire department and police department, back then. So for the last five years, technically Sergeant Cochran has been the 17th officer, if you will, but he's been off the books because of how we were doing that. But nonetheless, we are, you know, more challenged than ever before with the expectations of this community, you know, the needs, and again, protests, special events, most of this you've heard me discuss in the past. And that'll help me... The job is just getting more complicated, and yet public expectation... Expectations are essentially, you know, they expect perfection, within reason. So right now, we're, for a variety of reasons, we are short-staffed, and it's having, you know, it's having some serious challenges. You know, we've got, matter of fact, one of our officers, he's in the room in the back there. We're 500 hours of overtime, another sergeant with 400-plus hours of overtime. This is simply too much, and it's coming at a great cost. It comes at a cost of the efficiencies of the officer and their performance, as well as their personal lives are greatly impacted. And also, we're concerned, you know, with the agency, how we connect with the community, things that, you know, when Mike Philbrook, who's here, you know, many years ago, he said, "Hey, let's do Coffee with the Cop." You know, great, successful program that really allowed us to have those non-adversarial one-to-one with the public, talk about anything, very similar to, you know, coffee and Begetos. And Begetos was one of our places that we've done Coffee with the Cop. But Bike Patrol, things that are very effective programs to help us connect, we just haven't been able to do, so I think it's been noticed that the frequency that, whether you've seen Bike Patrol, Food Patrol, or these Coffee with the Cop type events, how important they are to... We feel to us and to the community. So, and this all relates to, you know, to how are we reactive versus being proactive? And right now, we are gonna be faced with some serious challenges on the reactive side. This is the proposed org chart of what 17 officers would look like. And as you'll see down below, one of the key reorganizations on the left side, bottom left, is a detective position that's to be determined, so one of the individuals from the patrol side of the house, if you will, will be assigned a position for a period of up to a couple of years, maybe three. Three years, I think, is where we're talking, but it's a union assignment where that officer would become... Would be a detective and would gain very valuable experience in financial crime, you know, evidence processing, more so than what everybody is already able to do so right now. And also, we thought it was important to have the... Right now, our SRO, which is Matt Nysley, who's also assigned to the Special Investigation Division, so he's doing a lot of the sex crimes, the child sexual assault cases, and we really felt that that should fall under the, you know, the umbrella of a detective supervisor, as well as having that continuity of making sure that sometimes, because, you know, children, you know, youthful offenders, as well as victims, there are different needs and things that we have to make sure that we have in place. So that's what 17 officers, counting myself, would look like, you know, with that.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So this will... It would help with 400 to 500 hours of overtime, you know, per person, one saying?
Yeah. Because right now, and the next slide is the schedule, and we've got a couple of officers that are out, you know, on admin leave, another one on medical leave, and the officer on medical leave, he's been out since September, and we don't expect him back for about another three months, and the other officer is on administrative leave. So whenever we have these shortages, it's hard, how do we absorb that? So this, if you look at... So looking above, you'll see the schedule, with the exception of like the captain and myself, I don't even appear on the schedule, but we try to work a four-on, three-off schedule. And so that's how... So it's not like, even though we say we have 16 officers, it doesn't mean that, you know, you pick up the phone, there's 16 officers available to come to respond, whether it's speed enforcement on your street, or whether, you know, we need to process a crime scene of, you know, on a property crime. So again, there's vacation time, comp time, training, all of these factors in to how we manage overtime and really provide, put our best foot forward to keeping the public So again, for the last five years, we've assigned Sergeant Cochran to the Drug Task Force, and during that time, what we did was a unique opportunity, because normally, you don't send an experienced sergeant to the Drug Task Force. Wade had already gone through command school at Roger Williams, he'd already gone through DEA basic training, as well as he's one of our... He was an instructor in tactics for us, and so... But with the help of actually, Bill Jennings was willing to come back and help us out, who's no longer, unfortunately, with us, he passed a few weeks ago. And in an arrangement with the Vermont State Police, we really made a successful... This really worked, and it paid off huge dividends to Montpelier, and it's almost impossible to say how much impact this partnership and having the Drug Task Force resources, you know, really focused in the central Mont area, but that great force multiplier, how much does that play into our three straight years of significant crime reduction? You know, when we think about, you know, Sir Robert Peel's Nine Principles of Policing, which is pretty much, which goes way back before President Obama's task force on 21st century policing, but it's pretty much the same thing, but, you know, the nine principle is effective policing is really... One of the reflections of that is gonna be, is there a crime reduction? Is crime under control? So I think we've been greatly successful by having this effort here. And again, we've had, done even more with our federal partners, you know, here locally. This is just an example. Wade was case agent on this case. It's still ongoing. It was in western Massachusetts, but what you're looking at right there, that's 10,000 bags of fentanyl, and Wade... And there was, just that night alone, you know, there was 15,000 bags were recovered in western Massachusetts. That was all fentanyl that was headed to our central Vermont. I point this out because, you know, I'm a mother... You know, we joke about it, but my mother had a little bit. You know, even though he's with a highly capable team of agents and troopers, you know, I know when he's out of state, you know, we just wanna, you know, just kinda, "Let me know, how's it going? When are you back home?" Kind of thing. But this is just... This is a side of the opiate problem, from, you know, from what law enforcement's primary responsibility is, and that is the, you know, the intervention and interdiction of drugs.
The only correction is that sees a mother had a lot of it.
So, well, you know, it's a... So... And the other thing that's important as far as how this relates to, you know, making sure that hopefully we at least get to getting back to 17 officers here in Montpelier, working out of the police department, there's a lot of things that are, you know, in flux. And right now, there's still an ongoing debate between the State of Vermont and the Department of Justice regarding the sanctuary jurisdiction, if you will, of Vermont. And even though there was bipartisan support of a bill that Senator Scott signed into law March of 2017, it was Act 79, it was basically said that Vermont, first of all, we will comply with 1373 and other federal regulations that's required to, and at the same time, we're not... We have no authority to participate in civil immigration issues. We made that point very clear, and it's kind of a no-brainer. Vermont is one of many states that are in this boat. 77 states have filed to get the federal government. Vermont has not done that. But anyway, federal funding for FY18 and '19 is being withheld, and that is the funding that would support... But this is just, this is a side that, of, of the opiate problem from, you know, from what law enforcement's response, primary responsibility is, and that is the, you know, the intervention and interdiction of drugs.
The only correction is that season mother had a lot of it.
So, well, you know, it's, I, so. The, and the other thing that's important as far as how this relates to, you know, making sure that hopefully we at least get this, getting back to seventeen officers here in Montpelier, working out of the Police Department, there's a lot of things that are, you know, in flux. And right now, there's still an ongoing debate between the state of Vermont and the Department of Justice regarding the sanctuary jurisdiction, if you will, of Vermont. And even though there was bipartisan support of a bill that Senator Scott signed into law March of 2017, it was Act 79, it was basically said that Vermont, first of all, we will comply with 1373 and other federal regulations that's required to, and at the same time, we're not, we're not, we have no authority to, you know, participate in civil immigration issues. We made that point very clear, and it's kind of a no-brainer. Vermont is one of many states that are in this boat, 77 states have filed to get the federal government, Vermont has not done that. But anyway, federal funding for FY18 and 19 is being withheld, and that is the funding that would support the Vermont Drug Task Force, which is not that big to begin with. So, and for the past five years, we were picking up approximately $130,000 in grant funding to cover all of Sergeant Cochran's pay and benefits. So with that shift, like Montpelier and Berry City, it's now up to us to pick up the slack, if you will. And for the record, Berry City, I talked to Chief Bombardier a couple weeks ago, they are, their strength, they have 20 full-time police officers, so as we compare, you know, kind of our neighboring communities, and also because of some of the recent, you know, shifts and challenges at the local level, they've also stood up a street crimes unit, something that not, we're not proposing at all that we would need to do that, but we would certainly support and participate with that model as needed, as well as all the other still ongoing ops that we may have with our federal partners.
Sorry, street crimes are like mugging or?
It could be, yeah. Primarily, it's going to be violence around drug trafficking, including drug trafficking. You know, if you can jump on it quickly with detectives, you can do, you know, warrant process, evidence processing, the, you know, interviewing individuals that may be willing to cooperate with you in the moment, to even where there's a certain small level tactical operation may need to happen very quickly.
Quicker search warrant executions do and stuff like that, so it's not necessarily, there's not, there's less time between when the warrant is issued and when it's executed, which means less time to move.
Yeah. And this concept is very much supported by State's Attorney Rory Tebow. So this is what we're up against, drug trafficking, fentanyl exposure even, to our firefighters and police officers dealing with us on a regular basis now, illegal firearms, you know, it's the currency of the drug trade. Our officers this, this past year, they've evolved with several interventions with deployment of Narcan, along with our Fire Department, been approximately over 50 ODs in this, very Montpelier alone for 2018. Many of those have been fatal. So again, we, we know the threat, we know the problem, you know, both in here in Vermont as well as nationally, but it's not all doom and gloom also because there, for example, we have, as, I think this council knows, we have capacity for treatment. This, this year, our department, through my involvement, we are now part of the Washington County Self-Use Regional Partnership. So that is basically all the medical folks and the treatment and prevention folks, and Chief Bombardier is there as well. That's something that I will be passing the torch on to now that he's back in the PD here, will be Sergeant Cochran's duty. Because it's important to see, like, you know, one of the things, for example, what's the impact of what we're doing on the street and how, to what's happening on the treatment and the medical side? And addiction, as we know, is also directly related to our burglary and other, other crime here in Montpelier. Several years ago, this, an organized crime drug enforcement task force concept was pitched by ATF, but at a meeting that is actually at Montpelier Police Department when it was pitched to Department of Justice officials. What an organized crime drug enforcement task force does, it's through the U.S. Attorney's Office as a, as a, you know, as a, ultimately from the Attorney General, it's special funding sources for dedicated, complex, you know, violent crime and drug trafficking. This screenshot was at a private ceremony at the ATF office recognizing the court team members in the summer. So as you'll see there, you'll see Montpelier PD, FBI, Vermont State Police, South Burlington and Berry City PD, along with ATF and DEA. This was the core team, but was also supported by Customs and Border Protection, including aerial assets, the helicopter. U.S. Marshal Service played a significant role, and again, amazing cooperation from U.S. Attorney Christina Nolan's office, to Attorney General Donovan's office, and to Rory Tebow's office. I mean, this is, and this is how we've been able to do a lot of things without impacting what you see every day. So this one operation, Operation Hydra, which we can now talk about, it's, what it, so we had two officers, two detectives, Sergeant Cochran being one of them, as well as former Detective Steve Nolan, who retired back this fall, were assigned to Operation Hydra, as well as most of the department at some point has, has cycled through with various phases of the operation. If you recall, in June, there was a significant sweep of over, I think, 25, 26 defendants were rounded up and over a couple, you know, two days. So again, we spent a lot of time supporting that to, and then as a result of this two-year operation, 71 illegal firearms, and there were some real high-risk raids. I mean, I cannot, you know, stress enough the, the hazards and dangers that, that our teams were up against, things that just heavily bothered, you know, when we didn't have an armored vehicle available, things like that. And where, even though we had multiple agencies, federal mostly, and our folks, it was just, you know, it's not the time to be insufficient resources for what we're up against. So. This is the core team. Of those in the picture, you have, three of those are from Montpelier PD. This is in Burlington, Vermont. So this is just on the table, 71 firearms that, over the course of the two-year period of Operation Hydra, were seized in the Berry Montpelier area. Most of these firearms are stolen, others were involved in straw purchases, others had obliterated serial numbers of their firearms, were either in possession of somebody that was prohibited offender. And, but this is, this is, you know, what I don't think people fully understand or appreciate what this department and all of our partners are involved in on a, you know, semi-regular basis, too, with too much frequency, on trying to keep our community healthy. And with that, do you have anything else you'd like to add from the Drug Task Force perspective?
Sure. Just a couple of things. I had the luxury of going to agency, different agencies throughout the state, being with the task force, I might be in Rattleboro one day and then St. Albans the next day. And everybody that I worked with, oh, you're from Montpelier PD, that's a really great agency. Montpelier, so it was great to hear, for one thing, so I just wanted to add that. The other thing is, one of the things that I've been able to do is meet with addicts and work with addicts every day, that was kind of my life for five years. Some of those addicts lived right here in Montpelier. One of the car stops that I can talk about that was intel-based, we got almost 2,000 bags of heroin from this person that was directly being dealt from George Street in It's coming in constantly, and I'm not just saying it's all drugs because it's not, and that's not what the detectives are going to do, but with the drugs, property crimes, whoop, I'm sorry, with the drugs, there's property crimes. And one of the things that I've talked to with some of my helpers, or CIs, is I'll ask them, what's your habit? And they'll tell me, you know, three, 200, 300 bags of heroin. So, well, how do you afford that? Well, how do you think we afford that? They steal, they break into places. So if we can combat this issue and, or this problem, it would, I think it would benefit Montpelier. I know, I think we have an aggressive plan that we can do if we can build this detective agency, or the detective.
Section.
Section, and, and I think it'll be, yeah, I think it'll be good for Montpelier, so.
We probably don't have time, so I'm not going to avoid that, but this clip, if you look at, you know, it's, Celine MacArthur from Channel 3 News did a series called The Fix. I highly recommend looking at this, this one particular episode, it's just shy of five minutes, but it was, it was shot with, matter of fact, you know, Sergeant Cochran supervised with the Drug Task Forces there, but many of the, it shows even somebody, an assault that was captured during a drug, drug deal with an informant, where the person is, you know, I remember responding to that call, you know, where basically his head caved in from being kicked, and you digitize, you see that. That was, that was at the Econ Lodge in Montpelier, Vermont. So I mean, I just need to impress upon you, not to scare you, because crime, it's still a very safe community. And I should have started with that, I need to end with that. But nonetheless, there isn't a magical agency that just handles all this behind the scenes. And it is, and everybody has a vital role from, you know, the rookie patrol officer to the seasoned veterans that are negotiators, or school resource officers are, you know, just, we just make it work. And so, last slide, but the other thing to consider is that, you know, and I certainly am concerned, Montpelier is, is growing in certain ways, and we need to make sure that we have a police department that is not taxed and that we can keep pace with the needs of this community. And I just happened to have a conversation with State's Attorney Tebow this afternoon, told about this presentation, he said, hey, we want to make sure I put the code in, so I did. He said, MPD is a professional, proficient police department, but he certainly, again, echoed, there's real challenges on the horizon, and we need to be at full strength to, to deal with that. And lastly, I think it's important that we have sufficient, you know, resources so when we prepare at the end of this upcoming fiscal year for my departure, and then a few months later, Captain Martell's, I want to make sure that we have our best foot forward. So, you know, when that next chief comes in with his or her vision and priorities, you know, that they'll be at full staff, they're just, you know, hit the ground running. So that is, I know it's a lot of information, I didn't mean to make it too heavy on the whole drug side, but we can't ignore this. And I know this is also something that, you know, again, we had to clear it with, you know, with ATF to show those pictures and talk about it. I had a conversation a couple weeks ago with Christina Nolan, our U.S. Attorney, she presented Operation Hydra at a, at a conference with U.S. Attorneys in the Midwest recently, too, because it just shows, and again, and she even acknowledged that this was, you know, this concept was pitched and hatched at Montpelier PD, Department of Justice. So with that, that's kind of an explanation and some background for you folks as to why we are trying to get back to seventeen police officers. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Yeah. So, this is, this is like stuff that I know lots of things about. So, one of the things up there, so you had your schedule listed, but does that cover, like, if, for an example, an officer is subpoenaed or, you know, requested for a deposition or something on their off-hours, how, how does that sort of factor in to?
If it's on their day off, or if they're an evening officer, then it's overtime, and per contractual rate, if it's not, you know, either coming in early on their shift or the tail end of their shift, it's a four-hour overtime minimum that they have.
And in terms of, so, search warrant stuff that happens after shift, which is there, there's a significant amount of that, how, how does that work? Like, is that, there, are they compensated for that, or are they just taking their own time because it's just easier to do it that way, or?
They are always compensated and it's, it's, you know, like, for example, the drug work, when they, when these things happen, sometimes I'll get a call from either, you know, Sergeant Cochran or ATF saying, this is what we've got, we need, what, you know, we need certain people because of whether it's their background, they're, you know, whether, then we have to go, and we have to manage to, who's still on shift to cover, you know, anything that may happen in Montpelier. And, you know, Bill and I have talked, and, you know, I know he's not a big fan of it, but I have participated in many of these ops directly myself, and because it's just of my long history of working with these folks.
And how much control do you, as a department, have over, for example, like coming in to, to get a search warrant signed, or how, how much of that, I guess what I'm getting at is, like, are you telling officers, you know, you know, do it this day at this time, or is it sort of, are you at the whim of other entities in terms of?
Both. For example, if, you know, if a car is seized and someone's incarcerated, you know, it doesn't have to be done right then and there, there's an opportunity. But also, we cannot just, like, hold something forever, you know, there's, there's a certain legal requirement where we, you know, we may have to execute the search warrant. If it's something such as, you know, related to timeliness of evidence potentially being lost or destroyed, then, you know, whatever may be needed has to happen very quickly. The other thing along those lines, though, which has been so frustrating to me, is the complete disregard that protesters have. And, you know, whether, you know, even, even the peaceful ones, for example, the Moral Mondays, when those things happen, they, 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 there's an additional burden on the Montpelier Police Department to support the Capitol Police, the Vermont State Police, because they, you know, and vice versa. We never know when they spill onto State Street. And, but so it's, it's also, so it's those protests, then you throw in all the parade permits, you know, and the great things that make Montpelier, Montpelier. But suddenly, you know, okay, well, I just said come in July 3rd, now it's Do Good Fast, and, and, you know, and that's why the captain and I get stuck a lot of times because, you know, we're, we're the freebies, you know, we're south. But anyway, but there's a lot of unplanned overtime, training requirements, we do a lot of training at Montpelier Police Department, and for example, if we do use of force training four times a year for the, for each officer, we have to offer each one of those sessions twice, you know, to make sure that we cover the shifts and then get people through, on top of other trainings that may be out of state or, you know.
I guess my only question was, on the performance measures reported, the last year was FY16, and I think you've got more recent data, and not necessarily tonight, but in general, I'd be interested to see.
Sure, I've got some data now. Like crime, I will, like crime, I have done the actual percentage, but crime is significantly down again for 2018 from 2017, which was down from 2016 on.
That's reported crime.
Reported offenses to us. Now, when I say an offense, a crime, that can be anything from car, you know, bumped into mine in the parking lot, broke the mirror and dented my door, that's an offense. Well, you know, we've got a financial crime worth a couple hundred thousand dollars, that's an offense. So again, we need to be careful what we just talk about with those placeholders. I will tell you, performance measurements that are really meaningful are very hard for police because it's easy for us to track kind of like these, these numbers, we're great on data, but what does that really mean when you want to look at workload, impact and quality that needs to go into a more complex case?
Okay. Thanks. I am curious if this additional person is, because it's, they would be reducing overtime if that is a net increase in cost or reduction?
It's going to be an increase, though. I mean, because our, our, yeah.
And that's, you have to go to 18 to really make a difference in time.
Well, yeah, but I think, but just by the nat, the nature of a schedule, a two, and what?
If you've got two officers down, I mean, you've got to have a lot of overtime.
On top of that, yeah, and there's always, but that's always, you know, it's, it's always a struggle, even when I think, you know, in my time as Police Chief, I could probably count, you know, on one hand, there were weeks where we had our, whatever our full authorized, back when we had 17 officers, when we had all 17, you know, working, so.
Great. Any further questions?
For next year, you'll ask for the 18.
Probably.
Are you still here next year? Talking next year's better than already.
Well, in all honesty, in all honesty, you know, that was certainly discussed, you know, as the same major knows, that initially I was thinking actually of 18 officers with one potentially, you know, putting another officer back on the Drug Task Force at some point, you know, when, when the department's at a position where we can do that, and when Uncle Sam decides that there's money again to do that. I know Commissioner Anderson is, you know, he's committed to making sure the task force still survives, you know, hoping at some point Vermont will be picked back, like, I would hope.
Okay. Connor?
I think it's just important to say, like, nice to meet you, Sergeant Cochran.
Nice to meet you, too.
I think we all owe you a great debt of gratitude for what you've done over the past couple of years here.
Thank you.
And, you know, must have been a, a big sacrifice to yourself, your family, so.
They're glad I'm home.
Good, good to see you. Thanks so much for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next up, we have Jeff, I think, right? Want to come tell us about your thoughts and plans? Yes?
Is there going to be any public comment, or is this just presentations from the department?
I think there's only these two, unless Bob, you're coming up, I'm not sure.
I was here to answer some questions from Councilor.
Okay, so I think we just had these two, and then we're going to start talking about the budget. We're going to take it in three sections, and we'll probably have some time for a public comment after each of the sections. Does that make sense?
I was able to sidebar with the chief before the meeting, so I think I've had all my questions answered, unless other people have questions.
Okay.
I think the clerk was raising his hand.
Yes, I had to do some research to respond to some stuff that Rosie was asking, so. Oh, yeah, I just, at some point, I'd like to respond to some concerns that Counselor Kruger had. I've done some research and I figured it all out.
Okay.
And just before Jeff starts, I'll note that we're actually not going to allow the chief to retire, so.
No, you're okay. Okay. Go ahead, Jeff. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Before we start, before we have Jeff start, I want to raise a question under our ethics policy. I think because I have a family member who's employed by the Parks Department, Parks Department, there's a possibility for at least an appearance of conflict of interest. My analysis of the situation is that I don't believe that I have an actual conflict of interest because whatever happens with the. interest because whatever happens with the budget, council members don't have the ability to, to make personnel decisions in any of the departments. But I wanted to, and I know that there, one of the proposals is to add staffing, potentially a full-time employee, and so I just wanted to raise that with the council, give anyone an opportunity to suggest that I recuse myself if anyone believes that that's necessary.
No, I, I thank you for raising it. I think your consideration's there that, you know, we're not really in charge of staff. It's a fair assessment of, that is fine.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Great, I'm afraid I don't have a PowerPoint for you, but I can, would like to bring up the highlights of the changes for what is a record request on my part from the council and the residents. In short, I'm looking for a, two full-time positions, one for the Parks Department and that one is to, to do several things. One is to provide the resources needed to support a growing Parks Department and to catch up on a huge deficit in hours that are spent. And I'm not sure if I've, I've said this to a few people lately and part of what I've not done, I don't think as well as I should have in advocating for myself over the time is to, about the real cost in hours that it takes to do the job. And right now, as I sit here, I have at least nine, I have about a thousand hours of work time before I retire and I have 960 hours of comp time on my paycheck. And I don't get time and a half as department and I don't get those hours, the time and a half hours. Those are, those are real hours. And so, the job has demanded a lot of time. And as you all probably can feel yourselves of working on the council, it's one thing if you're expected to work three committees and you do it, but, and then if you do four or five committees and you feel like you're a hero, that's one thing, but if you're expected to do that seventh or eighth committee, then that can be a bit stressful. So there's one thing doing it and feeling like a hero and then there's another thing when it's expected of you, the way it is now, it just, things don't go well unless you work way more hours than should be expected of someone. And I do not want to pass that on to whoever takes my place, whether it's Alec or anybody else. So that's, I feel strongly that just to, just to keep even, there's, I mean, a half-time person probably wouldn't even do it, really. I mean, till, till a couple of years ago, I was doing regularly 70 hours every, every week averaging.
So Jeff, you have a question?
Yeah.
So, you now have two people, you and Alex.
Right.
And this is just the parks, not the trees, so in the parks.
Right.
And you're asking for two more or are you taking yourself out of the equation and asking for three total?
Well, what I'm looking for, and just to be clear, it's not two people for the parks right now, it's a, it's a, it's two four-fifths position for the parks right now.
Two four-fifths?
Two four-fifths position for the parks. Because we have two full-time positions that run the entire park system and run the entire tree management system. And how that's divided out is, one day a week, each of us is just trees and four days a week for each of us is just parks. So I'm, I hope, that's a little bit confusing, but I hope I made that.
Okay, so two at one fifth is two trees.
Right.
Two at four fifths, two parks.
And just to make sure it's clear, but a little bit more complicated, the new person helping in trees that you've awarded through June is two days a week. And that's temporary, it's temporary unless you award any more budget money for that. Any questions about that, is that clear enough?
So then you're adding, and back to, are you adding a full park or another four-fifth?
So I'm, I am suggesting adding, I'm suggesting adding a full-time parks position, yes, at a, at a lower wage.
So, just to make sure, that's not in the manager's budget, that's the additional add-on that we're discussing tonight.
That's the additional add-on.
Yeah.
Oh, great, I should make that distinction, yes, that's, thank you, thank you for that. So, right now, that's not added at all. However, in the tree position, I believe the extra tree person has been added. Now, that, that would be very helpful for the work that we do as well because the, the tree work without the ash borer, just to be clear, the tree work without the ash borer has been something that we haven't been able to keep up with the hazards, much less with the preventative pruning. So with this extra help, we hope, I expect to catch up with the hazard work, although we may actually catch up with the hazard work with the, too tense person today because the, I expect to catch up with the hazard work this winter and then start to be able to get into a preventative treatment program for the street trees for the first time, for the first real time since I've been tree warden in seven years. So, I mean, we've done some minor neighborhood prunings, but.
I guess I'm, I'm confused about that because the part-time position, or the temporary position was intended to work on Emerald Ash Borer work, but it sounds like that's being pulled to use for pruning instead?
No, I thought I had made clear that we were really behind in hazard tree work and that I thought it was crucial that we not go into an increased demand load with the ash borer with a backlog of hazard tree work. And that this, that we were going to do that in the fall, in the winter, and then the spring, it would shift more to the ash preventative work, the treatment of trees and the preparations, the setting up and the staging and doing that at more clear ash-related work.
Because the spring is also the cycle of the borer too.
That's, that's correct. That's correct.
Can I ask you to put a financial number to the add-on positions?
To the add-on positions?
Yeah.
Let's see.
Fifty-five?
It's for the, for each position, it's, I believe it's right in the, in the 55 range, yes.
110 total.
Right. Now, one of the positions, and I would suggest it would be considered, the tree position is that there's potential savings in my retiring next year and that that would save 10,000 of what otherwise would be that, and the difference that the person coming in would be at the low end and I'm leaving at the higher end.
Are you planning to do that the end of 2019 or June?
The end of June. Yeah.
The 55K is inclusive of benefits, is it?
Yes, I believe so. Yeah.
Other questions?
I know this is too far out probably, but imagining for the moment that we aren't going to add any more park acreage over the next 10 years or so, which is, I think, the expected window of the ash borer, do you think that we will still need the full staff that you're requesting now after all the ashes get taken care of?
After all the ashes get taken care of? That's a good question. I would suggest to do a quality tree program, you would need at least a half position, if not a full position, to do a quality preventative maintenance and a planting program. But there's a chance, if you want to dial it back to more of the tree services done before, that you could dial it back to half-time position.
But what I'm, I mean, what I heard you arguing is that you already have been understaffed and your position has been understaffed for some time.
That's right. We've been doing the tree program with two days a week, right? And that is clearly, clearly not enough to me, right? And again, Burlington for comparison, I think they have four full-time folks compared to two, two days a week, not even a half-time position, right?
Well, we're, Burlington's hard to compare ourselves to in terms of population and areas.
In areas, yeah.
I think that's particularly helpful.
And miles of roads, we can have a, we have a clear, and right of way, it's fairly clear. So there's a number of ways to look at that and be happy to look at that sometime, but the short story is, is what we're able to do and not able to do. And right now, we haven't been able to keep up with the hazard trees, which I believe in the city councils, for liability in the city council's interest, we want to at least be able to take care of the hazards and that's, that's a minimum. And then the other question is, what kind of quality of trees do you want in your downtown and along your streetscapes? What value is that to the city? And I would suggest that that is a value that is worth pursuing.
Any questions?
One about capital.
Yes, good.
Now, in the budget, there's 20,000 that's called the CIP plan.
Yes.
But then there's another one, Equipment Parks Plan, 21.
Yes, yes. Twenty-one, and what is in that budget for this next year? And that's of note because there's an increase in each of those two categories. So, staffing, an increase, those represents virtually all the increases, the changes in the, in the budget. And then the capital, and then you were asking about the equipment?
With the capital, those two got in. And so I know that in one, I saw trucks, but I didn't understand what was inclusive in the equipment plan.
The trucks, and the equipment is, there's, for 2020 is the tractor.
That's in the CIP, right?
That's in the equipment.
I was looking at the one that wasn't CIP, maybe.
The one that's, that's, I have in the parks equipment, that in 2020, the tractor is up, a brush hog and a trail groomer for cross-country skiing. Those are the three things that I have listed in our equipment request.
Under the 21?
Under the 2020.
Okay, and the 20, that's in the CIP?
20, yeah. Then, in the CIP or still in the equipment?
You know what, there's, there's two items, that's why, when I was at the Parks Commission the other night and you were talking about them and maybe Bill can help me understand the difference in the, the equipment that's listed in the CIP under the 20, I thought that was the tractor and another vehicle.
So, tractor is equipment, that's in the, so, there's the equipment budget, then there's the capital improvements. And the equipment, we try not to ever put equipment in the capital improvements. So capital improvements is.
We lumped them together.
We.
We went over them in the same meeting.
Okay, I see, they're in the, that's why I saw them in the same list, but you don't consider those part of the CIP report. Got it.
Capital improvements and then there's equipment.
Yep.
Right.
Okay, they were all part of the spreadsheet, so I just couldn't keep them separate.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Does that answer your questions?
No, that's great, they're in there, that's what you wanted.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, great. Any questions about that?
Do you guys still really use pagers?
We don't.
Okay, good. I was like, it's listed as cell phone and pager as one of the line items and I, it just caught my attention because.
No.
Pagers are.
Cross applications.
We only use, we only use cell phones.
I was going to say, I'd like to up it a little bit if we can get rid of pagers and use like actual technology.
Yeah, current technology.
We do actually use some pagers in some departments for automated alarm systems. It's like sewer pump stations that go into alarm, will trip over to the pages because they're actually pretty reliable.
Yep, they are, yes.
Not in the park.
They're like faxes, they have their use, you know.
Okay, further questions for Jeff? Okay.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. So we have no other further presentations. So I guess at this point. You can go with the questions. Oh, yeah, did you want to jump in, Jeff?
Yeah, just really quickly, Counselor Kruger saw a couple spikes in, at my FY '18 budget and was concerned that basically level funding my budget for next year, the spikes might show up again, it might not be adequate. I didn't know what she was talking about and I dug around there and now I do. There were two spikes and the short answer is no, they're not going to be repeated again because one of them was permission I got from Bill to help me out with some of his budget for a professional development project at the University of Minnesota, which was great. I love this. It's a certificate in election administration, it's terrific. And the other is that I overspent my dues, subs and meetings. And that's because around fiscal 18 is when I became a hot commodity and people started wanting to have me at conferences and things. So, this time around, to keep that from happening again, I have purged three of my four memberships because I wasn't getting anything from those three and I'm tired of them. So it should be right back down to normal. So no, there shouldn't be any need to, to continue that spike over to fiscal 2020.
Great, thank you. And just, I wouldn't begrudge you expense, like, I trust that they're legitimate expenses, I just wanted to make sure that we don't need to plan for there to be less if you need it.
Interestingly enough, this whole non-citizen voting thing, if it weren't for the classes I was taking through the University of Minnesota, I wouldn't have known it was even a possibility. I've been telling people for years, what are you talking about when they come and talk to me? And that's how I found out that it's done all over the place, so.
Okay, any further questions?
We do have other city staff, if there aren't questions, other departments, even though you didn't ask for them, but if they come up.
I hope what I was conceiving of earlier made sense to people, where there's sort of the, what I was calling the core budget, which is really the recommended part of the budget that is basically the same as last year. So I would love to talk about that first. So if there are any things that people object to or would like to change or?
Yes.
Since we delivered the budget to you, we realized that we made an error.
Talking of an error.
I wasn't going to say that.
Bill's always good about that.
So I've just highlighted up here, the, the community fund was, should actually be 133.5 instead of 1, actually 133.250 instead of 124.5. I actually have it wrong on this as well, but the 250. Anyway, so I've adjusted that on this sheet and would have been recommended that way. The idea was to recommend what they were recommending, they're coming in next week. That's still, so.
This number is the right one?
The one up there is the right one, the one I gave you and was on the worksheet you had was $9,000 too low.
So, but the 133.5 is the right number?
Well, actually it's 133.250, but.
Oh, okay.
But that's, anyway, so that is, and, and, you know, have, had, they gave us the correct number, I want to be clear, and they gave us their spreadsheet with all their recommendations and we just picked up the wrong number off the spreadsheet and put it in. Our intent was to fund what they had and that's what we would have recommended had we had it right and it makes a minor difference.
It's an old number, the 124.1.
Yeah, well, it was just.
It's actually a subtotal in the spreadsheet that they sent.
Yeah, and we picked the subtotal up and not the total.
And I left out the hard part.
So, since, since that's on the table for a second, I just wanted to talk about the timing of that process for that, how that decision-making process happens because we had an issue last year where the timing didn't really work out and we had in our, you know, the previous year we had funded at a certain level and there was sort of an assumption that we would continue. And then the committee met and awarded funds at a higher level because they felt that these were really worthwhile items and came to us and said, "Okay, here's your number." And then we had the decision to either yank, I mean, not yank back because they hadn't been awarded, but to say, "No, actually, we don't want to award these" or to allocate the higher level. And it feels like that may have happened again this year, that they have made funding decisions and we are now deciding how much to fund that at. And I think we need to revisit where their grant process falls in our budget timeline because while we have delegated the responsibility to them to decide which items to fund, we, I don't think that we intended to delegate the responsibility to decide how much total to put towards this particular area of the budget. And it feels like that's really what we've ended up doing with the current timing. So, I know, Anne, you had mentioned wanting to revisit this whole process this summer a little bit.
Well, I, so I agree with that and I think. Well, I, so I, I agree with that, and I think, um, they're actually going to be here next week to go over that, so I think it would be a good time to talk with them about that. The, the, you know, sort of how it came about. So first I'll say for this year is actually if they took last year's funding and what had been approved by the, the voters, they're still below that total. So I think, I believe they believe that's what they were working with, um, whether we said that to the monada that, so, so I don't think they were just spending money haphazardly, we just picked up the wrong number in this case. However, that said, um, the, the timing has always been, because this is the time of year when people would be going to town meeting votes, and the thought was, if these are going to be awarded, we want these decisions made soon enough so that they can be listed in the annual report, so people can see where the money is going. But we also, it also kind of runs right up against our budget cycle. For a couple of years, we actually tried to give them a number early, but that also meant that basically the council had picked that one budget in, out of all the rest, um, and then it became unchangeable, which was, you know, fine too, but it was whatever. So I think, you're right, there's.
Well, they get their applications done in August, or.
Right.
Deadline is in August, so we could get this in the fall.
But the question, I think that Rosie's raising is how much money, since it's, it's not like they're starting and going, it's not like we're giving them this much money for next year, and then they're saying, okay, this is how much we have to award. They get the applications, they come in, but then.
They don't know what total they have to work with.
I know, but after the application come in, they could come in and have a dialogue with us and we could decide on a total. That's what I'm saying, because they get them in August, I mean, when they, you know, a full month in September.
Right.
If you can talk to them and you can really decide then what you wanted to do, then they'd have a number to review them.
And I think there's a lot of ways we could do that, and, and you're right, and we, we, you know, we're not going to decide that tonight, but they are coming in next week or at the next meetings, yeah, this next week.
I would also make the case that we should not necessarily have that conversation next week, we can talk about it as being a problem, but let's set it aside as its own item to figure that out. I'm not gonna solve it. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. But thank you for reading that.
One additional option potentially is to pre-fund the following year, um, to each year, say next year, we're going to set the fund amount at this amount.
I think that would just require double funding one year.
But one year you'd be extra. Yeah, but, so we can move on from that, but it just.
We'll just take it as ours, just.
Okay, uh, so other items that are in, that was effectively last year's, um, budget?
I've got some more that normally I would have just sent to Bill as questions, and I didn't get together to do that, so, um, these are just random. I don't actually know what the veteran's tax credit is, it's in with the sprinkler tax credit, and I'm, I don't know what that means, I don't know what we do with that.
Yeah, so there's a, an exemption given to veterans that own property in the city of Montpelier for the first $10,000. So essentially, whenever you're assessed a value, if it's 200, if you're a veteran, there's a $10,000 exemption, so your assessed value becomes 190. And essentially, because we're giving as a community that exemption to veterans, the rest of the population picks up the difference that would become, is lost by that.
And how do we communicate that to, to public, or to potential beneficiaries that that's available?
Yeah, um, that is a good question, it's not exactly my area, I'd have to reach out to the assessor's office to find out, um, what the process is from application to.
I believe veterans associations let veterans know that they can do that.
It's a pretty standard practice across the state, but the intricacies, I'm, I can get to those answers.
It is an application they put in.
I believe so, yes.
And it was voter-approved?
So I would just want to make sure that we make it very apparent to everybody who's eligible that, you know, we have a benefit, that everyone knows that.
Absolutely.
Um, I, um, let's see, oh, I wanted to ask about pilot, um, there's an assumption that pilot will be the same as this current year, which was higher than past years, and I wanted to know how confident we are of that, like was this a one-time increase, or do we know?
It's been steadily going up, what our practice has been to budget the actual from the year before, and, and historically, we actually ended up getting a windfall, we've got, we've actually collected more, so that's been a pretty reliable practice. The, the reason I say that, I mean, there will come a time, you know, if we were to hit 100%, then it wouldn't go up any further, but we're about 80, some 100% right now. But because it's tied to the local options taxes, as, as more communities join the system or take that on, then more revenues go into that fund, and as sales increase and those kinds of things, well, you know, as those revenues increased, all the pilot towns see increases. So it's been, it's been slowly creeping up year to year, but we've always tried to not guess that it will go up, we've tried to stick with the prior year as a base.
Okay, great.
So we're pretty confident.
But we don't feel like it's like.
No, I'm confident it'll be that number at least.
Um, I wanted to talk for a minute about the sprinkler tax credit, um, noting that we give it for every building that has it, and now that we've amended our ordinance, we, for new buildings, are only requiring it kind of at the, generally at the state, buildings that we required by the state to have it already. So I just want to throw that on the table as maybe we want to think about, um, is there a way to take that away for public buildings, what would the policy impact be? Because when we think about, actually, I know that you're always very concerned about giving, you know, the largest property owners in town a, a break, this is a significant one, and so do we want to put our money there? Just, I don't have strong opinions, but I wanted to put it on the table as something to think about.
So I encounter that a little bit, and I know we have some firefighters here that might want to comment on it, and the chief. First of all, I think we believe that anything that creates an incentive for people to have and maintain a sprinkler is a good thing, and obviously some are required. But we, you know, we had a fire on State Street not very long ago that was put out by a sprinkler, in a wooden building with residents in there, and, um, it was, it was happening on a night where we got no call and support, and yet we were able to take care of it. Instead of the cost of fighting that fire with firefighters, you know, had it been a full blaze, would have been astronomical compared to what the credit that that building got. And so part of the theory is that the people that have buildings, sprinkled buildings, are putting less risk and demand on our fire department than my house is, than, because if I have a fire, I don't have a sprinkler system, and so it could be a worse situation. So I think, um, the, the theory when it went in was, you know, those that are reducing their own impact on firefighting services, you know, that's sort of being picked up by the rest of us who haven't reduced that risk.
And I, the only, I agree with that, the only thing I'm thinking about is the buildings that would have been required under state law anyway to get a sprinkler, we're also, they're benefiting as well, and is there a way, and I'm not sure there is, to, to separate out those buildings and not give the credit for those buildings, and this is not a decision we can probably make in this year's budget process, but.
And it would be a charter change too. Well, actually, well, no, I don't know, the charter allows us to give the credit, we could change it, right?
Okay. Um, the, another one I wanted to just think about for a second is, there were a number of, um, small line items that go towards kind of general downtown promotions, such as the holiday lights, the winter festival, those sorts of things. And I wanted to kind of toy with the idea of maybe, because the function of those things is to promote downtown and the downtown businesses, would we want to think about taking those items and putting them under Montpelier Alive, and then if Montpelier Alive feels that these are things that really are helping downtown businesses, they can continue to make those expenditures? If they think the money would be better spent somewhere else, they could do that instead. Again, I don't feel strongly about it, I just wanted to, it's an idea, I wanted to put it on the table and think about. It, it would be, again, us delegating some decision-making about.
They essentially handled that for us anyway, now, so.
Yeah, but some of those events, they decided not to do, and wouldn't get done if they were in the city budget, so.
Well, that's kind of an interesting question, because it's, uh, what I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm understanding you saying that, um, not necessarily changing the dollar amounts, but just where it's, like how it's allocated.
So like winter carnival, or winter, winter festival.
Celebration.
I, I, I had to think back and think, what is that? Because I, honestly, I've never been to it, like it's not an event that's made a big impression on me, maybe it's made a big impression on other people. So if Montpelier Alive and the downtown businesses felt like that was really, that helps us out a lot, they could continue to do it, if they felt like it didn't, then it would, you know, they could take that money and do some other promotion event.
Just, in the short time I was on their board as advisor, they had some staff, they, they don't yet have a full-time director, I mean, it's still part-time.
Dan's.
They have the full-time.
Well, he's, uh, he's about 30 hours, I think the increase, 10,000 were put into them.
Yeah, anyway, I don't think he's full-time, and so they always had a staff pinch with some of them, and hence they didn't want to do them, not that they didn't think they were worthy, they just had to calculate what was their priorities with their staff needs. So I, I have a little hesitation, but it's a good discussion.
I, I agree, I would also want to get Dan's, maybe put on that before we made that kind of a change, but that feels like the kind of thing that, you know, we could, I don't, I, well, I guess if we approve this budget, then.
We can allocate it however we want.
Okay, well, fair enough, then, so it's, that's still a possibility, given it's a line item.
Right, if we approve it as this is $3,000 for winter.
But we can change that.
Festival, then we can make that.
Yeah, I mean, this is really, essentially, the appropriation you're approving is the community enhancements line, which is showing you how we calculate that, so people can see it, so we try to show those sorts of things. I mean, actually, to be, to be completely honest, your, your, the council is actually just approving the bottom line. No, but I mean, really, if you, and then it's managed, so, but obviously, we're sure.
Further questions?
Um, I just wanted to comment that I thought the DPW performance measures were excellent. I noticed there's a number of new ones on there, and I just really applaud them for that work, um, and hope that some of the other agencies can follow suit.
We're trying, say that louder.
Other than that, I think that was everything I had to say about the stuff.
You single-handedly dispelled the, nobody reads them.
I love them, they were such a, you know, for each area, there were three or four, they were really measurable, and they really get at that, what are we doing and how well are we doing it? So, that's great.
Thomas, I have a poster pad.
And he's not even here.
Uh, Jeff?
I just got a Facebook message from someone, uh, saying that the person is viewing the city council meeting at the moment, there is video but no audio.
Oh.
I think we, we know.
That's been a computer system.
They're trying to fix it.
Okay.
Okay.
So my understanding, my understanding is it's being recorded and what they.
Oh, and it'll be posted.
There will be audio in the post-production.
Okay, further comments about this portion of the budget? Uh, Jack and then Ben?
I, I had a couple of things that I noticed, uh, one, in going over the line items, I noticed, uh, a number of points where it seemed like there were big reductions in, uh, health insurance expenses, and maybe not an overall reduction, but, you know, in a certain department, all of a sudden we're spending 13,000 or something less. Is that simply because of personnel?
Does the finance director want an argument with the city manager?
So for years, we've always allocated, uh, health insurance cost based on a blended cost for a single two-person family, based on FTEs, or full-time equivalent employees. This year, I tried to push our software system to the next level, so that it would calculate a lot of these benefits and costs related to the budget automatically. In doing that, it's not so much in love with an FTE cost versus an actual health insurance cost, so in some departments, if you, you know, if everyone was, um, $14,000 a year as an FTE, this year, when we actually look at family plans versus single plans, that may have driven up or down the individual line item, but overall, um, costs, they have shifted very little, um, across the budget as a whole, it's just, it's picking up more of the actual costs in each of the departments, um, based on the, who's subscribed to what level of service.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, and the reason we don't like it from a budget perspective is that it's not, you know, we, we provide a plan for employees regardless of what, you know, what their dependents are. And so, you know, a single department shouldn't get a, a budget benefit if that particular year they happen to have a bunch of single plans and their budget gets cut so they don't have to, you know, or somebody else, you know, hires someone who has lots of dependents and their plan goes up, and, so, you know, we thought if, if, if everyone counts exactly the same in the health insurance, then there's no winning and losing in any particular department as far as, you know, it, there's no budget advantage, and so we're, we're still working at keeping it that way, that, you know, it's, um, because we want people to hire the best people, what their health insurance cost is. But for this year's budget, at least, we did it this way because of the software.
So next year, we don't know whether it's going to go up or down this way.
Depends who wins the argument next year.
That also protects us against discriminating against people with identity status.
Yeah, but I think it's just really, it just, I think it gives a, a more accurate cost of the delivering the service, you know, if, if you have 17 police officers, let's say, and it all costs the same per unit, then that's what it really costs us to deliver the service, not if you happen to have 17 that are all single, or 17 that all have kids, you know, it's just, it's a better way of looking.
I mean, as long as that information's not a part of the hiring process, then.
Oh, no, wouldn't be necessarily, but.
A more accuracy, more precision feels better.
Well, and the challenge on the budgetary side, and I agree with Bill's concept, 100%. And I would love to, no, but I would love to, and we may come back to the FTE allocation, but from my perspective, when we start making changes, even minor changes in salary and benefit line items, it has a ripple effect throughout the budget that is pretty monumental. So it's not just, if you reduce someone's wages by a thousand dollars, it's reducing their retirement, it's reducing their FICA, it's reducing their unemployment, it's reducing their workers' comp, so all those things, and then if they're an allocated employee that works in more than one department, or fund, for instance, you could have that split. So it, I'm trying to eliminate the amount of manual labor that goes into making what appears to be minor administrative changes.
I would highlight there is a, an option to support universal healthcare for everyone.
We were big supporters of.
Right now. Anything, anything further?
For that reason.
Yes, uh, first off, while we're still on insurance, um, I know that there are some employers who, uh, offer financial incentives to employees to, to opt out of their insurance, that's, my, my employer does that, uh, have we looked at doing that?
We do offer, um, currently, uh, an incentive or a, a buy-in provision, um, it's 31, 31.20 per year, or works out, so whatever that works out to over 26 pay periods of flat number, um, where if they have evidence of coverage through a spouse or, or other means, then we would offer that in lieu of, of health insurance.
Great.
And that is included in the health insurance line item.
I also had a question about, uh, unemployment, because I noted, noticed lines about unemployment compensation, are, are we a reimbursable employer or a taxable employer?
We are a, you're going to catch me on this, I believe it's a reimbursable definition, yes.
We only pay out, uh, when we have someone who has claims.
Correct.
Okay, that's reimbursable, yeah.
And our, our total, um, total premium has, has continued to decline since the, um, since the financial issues of 2008 or whatever, uh, so I, I think our total premium for this year is right around $4,000 for the entire city, so it's pretty minor.
Thanks.
First, I want to say that this was really hard for me to read, because a, a lot of it is beyond me, but I did try, uh, and, uh, I got some help, um, from Kate, and one of the things that she noted, I should follow up with the rest of them later. Uh, is under the, the sewer fund, I'm curious about the, um, it looks like, from the, the revenues in, in fiscal year 18, actual, we got something like twice what we had budgeted in tipping revenue, um, 670 to, to 1.1. Should we be expecting that again? Should we be changing that?
So, so that, um, in FY18, we budgeted about 650 or 675,000 dollars in, in septage and leachage revenue, um, in actuality, that exceeded a million dollars in FY18, but the reason we had budgeted a lower amount was we were anticipating work to have begun on the aging infrastructure project, um, when we did the budget at this time last year, so we were anticipating construction starting during some period of the year, which was going to diminish our capacity to accept that material, um, coupled with cleaning up, um, the digester clarifiers, uh, because you have to put those out of commission when you're doing that work, um, so there was a hesitation to budget at the same level that we had been receiving revenue because we thought we would not hit that mark, uh, in hindsight, we exceeded it, um, but we're looking at a similar reduction in revenue anticipated for FY20.
Because of the work being done.
Okay.
Further questions about the, basically, the whole budget?
I've got one more, but I wanted, um, so I did. So I did notice on the council breakdown and the managers' breakdown, both have line items for advertising that were, seemed high to me. I don't have a good sense of what, but I know that we, you know, we advertise our agendas and committee vacancies and stuff, but I was not sure why it was listed in both places and how all that, just the numbers intrigued me there.
Sure, I just catch the guy by his own budget, he doesn't know. Jamie really manages that part of it. But they, so basically, as I understand it, the council portion is for meeting advertisements, legal notices, the things related to council advertising for committees. The managers' one is when we're for job ads or anything else that we, you know, any other kind of notices or ads, or if we put something in about fall pickup or those, you know, those different types of other publications. So that's how she divides them out. There's no real rea, I mean, I think it's really all one and the same, but it's the way we always done it, so.
That's not a good answer.
That's why I said it, funny.
Okay, go ahead.
Just, this is a public record, since it's a tax unofficial business, but on Rosie's point there, Montpelier Alive through Dane Groberg, there's no problem with funds being allocated to be used at their discretion versus specific items. Example, the line Fall/Winter Festival was used for whomite madness this year.
Oh.
Just the Cliff's Notes of what he might say if he comes up here. And he says the sound's working fine, so.
I was going to say, he must have heard the sound if he gave you the answer.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to the next section, team?
Is this where public comment?
Yep, I was going to, because if we are, then I'll.
I guess I would just put on the table that the thousand-dollar USS Montpelier line item, my understanding is that that's Montpelier's contribution towards the hotel rooms for the members of the, for the sailors on the USS Montpelier to come be in our parade. I don't love the idea that we're charging Montpelier citizens extra money to pay for the US military to put their members in a parade. I feel like that should come from the US military. But I understand that that's a touchy subject and that some other people may feel very strongly about it, but I wanted to put it out there. I know it's just a thousand dollars, but.
And I had mentioned this to Rosie earlier, I have some similar concerns about it, but one of the things that I do particularly like is that it's an opportunity for, for the sailors to come and see Montpelier, the community for which they're, maybe they're in a certain sort of on. But I also wonder if it might be a better, or maybe, maybe a more community accessible thing to turn it into some sort of, like, party that the city goes to. I know that there's like a barbecue, I think, that happens, you know, if something like that would make, it would make me certainly feel more comfortable using taxpayer money for that, but I'm also assuming that they probably stay at the Capitol Plaza, which I think might raise some.
Room-to-meals tax.
Questions, well, I think, but I think also, you know, given the project that's ongoing, and I realize that, you know, they're a business in the community, but I just, I think it's important, and I wasn't picking up what you were, but yes, I had raised these concerns to you, and I know that there's a committee, I guess, that addresses this, but I just, I can think of ways to sort of bring the community into this that benefits everyone and not, not just sort of going to help defray the cost of rooms.
I'll just weigh in that, you know, I think that is in practicality how it's been used. The initial funding was simply to aid in, actually even the museum upstairs and the whole USS Montpelier effort and our relations with the hotel and to bring people up. And so, excuse me? Did I say hotel? I meant the sub, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was like.
I'm sorry, the submarine.
Well, underwater.
No, 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 I'm sorry, it slipped. And, you know, they were, people, there are other sources of funding obviously, so the city contributed a thousand dollars for them to participate. I think as a matter of practice, the committee that steers it just uses, that's what they used, it's for a room, but it could have been for, you know, food or any number of other things. The idea was to build a connection, I haven't come up in, and see the city.
And the VFW, VFW opposed, and American Legion are the primary sponsors of these activities and the visits, and they're the ones that provide, you know, coordination of schedules and meals and all the other things that go along with, you know, hotel stays. And it, you know, it is a community connection that I think has helped strongly, especially within the veteran community, and I'm not advocating one way or another, and I think, and if I may, I believe you were able to experience some time with the sailors as well.
Yeah, it was great.
One day with the community, so, so there's a lot of different elements to it.
Yeah.
Like several years ago, before security was as tight as it is now, the former mayor and police chief spent a week on the sub.
Oh, wow.
I guess I would say to me, it feels a little bit like a recruiting activity, and I feel like if the US government wants to pay for it, great, we would be happy to have them, but I'm not really sure why we would pay for it. But I, it's a thousand dollars, so. I, I would love to keep, I mean, I would love to also maybe talk about how it's spent, but that's also, I think, a discussion for that committee. I hear you on the recruitment aspect of it, but I think it's equally as much for the sailors themselves. It's just, it's a nice thing for them, you know, to have a connection to the place where they're still simply representing, so. Anyway, if people have other further thoughts on that?
Is this the kind of thing that other, other places do also? Is this unique to Montpelier or to other places where there, there's a connection with?
I don't know how many ships are named after other towns.
Yeah, I don't know.
I know there's a new USS Vermont, because they were also here this year. It was their first time.
It's not yet commissioned.
It's not yet commissioned.
PCU.
Right, and the plan for them is to rotate them around different places, and for them, they wanted to start in the capital. But I don't know about others. You know, I come from a shipbuilding town, so we had solid.
Did, did you want to make a motion about that, or?
Can we direct the committee that it just be used for some, I mean, so they can, in essence, reallocate the funds, so that those funds aren't being used to pay?
I think you want to have that conversation with them. I wouldn't want to make a motion without, like, including them in that dialogue, you know, any.
Yeah, there brings people serving that committee for a long time, I think they deserve the, the nod of conversation, for sure.
I don't need to make a motion at tonight, I, if, I'm not getting the sense that anyone else feels strongly about this, so.
I have to say, I haven't thought about it much until you pulled it up, but I, I see your point, and I think that it's definitely worth thinking about, at least, I mean, I, how much is the US military budget at the moment? I think it's large, and I don't know that we need to help that personally as the city. I think the city has its own things to do, so I also don't feel ready to move anything, but I think it's, I, I want to say thanks for bringing it up, at least, and I feel like I'm with you.
So maybe somebody can mention to the committee that we're.
We can go.
We, and, Bill, would you communicate?
Oh, we certainly will, absolutely, yes.
That there's some question about it, and then maybe they can speak to us at the hearing, so we can.
Sure.
Any other potential changes to the core budget? Okay, comments from the public on the core. Okay, I'm going to take it as though we're ready to move on.
I'm just giving my budget.
Okay. All right, so the next section is the additions to the base budget in meeting the strategic goals. So this includes things like additional CIP funding, the new police officer, increased housing trust fund, new full-time tree management, Ashmore staff, facility director, starting in April 2020, with their associated budget amounts. So we have a finite number of things to talk about in this section relative to what's proposed here. Would anybody like to make any changes or have questions or et cetera? Yeah?
So I'd like to put something on the table, I was talking to a number of people the last couple of weeks here, and the idea came up, and I think it's been discussed in previous councils, which may be the catalyst for raising the salary, I think you worked on that, Rosie, a bit. Just the idea that, you know, you want any citizen of Montpelier, any resident, to be able to come up here and sit in on our meetings and weigh in, I think that's tremendously important. In addition, you want anybody to feel like they can run for office while still having some family obligations, maybe childcare taken care of. And I've noticed other municipalities do have a program like this, where there would be childcare provided, serve in meetings. I don't think we could flesh out a whole program in the time we have, but I'd like to get the ball rolling, and I was just doing some math on the back of a napkin, to get like, you know, I think a licensed childcare provider, you could probably do it for about twenty dollars an hour, if you figured in about twenty-four meetings a year, you'd come out to about two thousand dollars. What I'm struggling with, things that, things that I think would be on the table, where would you put everybody, you know? Could we put them in a conference room? If there was just like one kid or something, would that be worth doing for the meeting? And then what about the other boards, like the DRB, some of these other ones who have been doing some real heavy lifting recently? I think I'd still like to put some money aside to try it out with a cap of two thousand dollars on it, to maybe put together a process in the next couple of weeks, where if somebody did need childcare, whether it be someone serving on a committee or someone in attendance, there'd be a threshold, maybe, you know, two or three applications for this, where we would provide childcare for them. I think it fits into civic engagement, I think it fits into the values of the city, and I don't think we want to be exclusionary. It was a step in the right direction by raising the council salaries, to take that into consideration, but I think asking for two thousand dollars is modest enough to just make sure we send a message that, you know, we are open to everybody, you know, not just folks who have the luxury of putting in the time here for four hours of ice here, so I'd like to put that on the table.
I'd love to talk about that, I happen to support this idea. I also would love to talk about that in the next section, is that okay?
That's where I just put it.
So I'm going to insert, it's line sixty-four there, childcare at meetings.
Just got added.
Okay, so let's take that up in a little bit here. But for now, in just the, that green section, the additions to the base budget, anything outside of that, I guess we throw in that, that yellow section still again, so. Any proposed changes to anything in this section?
The only thing I wanted to mention in this section is, I think, we may, I may have asked this at the last meeting, or maybe we talked about it after, but I want to acknowledge that, you know, starting a facility director in April 2020 does then obligate us for that full-time position in the following year. And so, I, do we have any better numbers about what that?
Well, we've estimated a full-time would be about a hundred thousand dollars with benefits and everything, that's why the remainder of it is in the next section at seventy-five, so we would be adding seventy-five thousand to the following year's budget.
So, I don't know.
It's making a future commitment.
Doesn't mean I'm not for it, I just want to, this is a nice thing that happens in the budget this year, but it doesn't happen next year.
Right, no, we were cognizant of that, and that was, but it was just a way of trying to get it in and still stay, keep a base budget at cost of living.
So just, you know how, I'm thinking about that, for the green section here, this is, I'm thinking of this as at least starting them in April, we can talk about any sooner or anything additional in the next section, so is it, is it at least this much? Does that make sense?
Yes, I'm just pointing out that it's also committing us for the following year to be a full-time position.
Well, that's really true of a number of the things in here, like adding a police officer.
Right, yeah.
We're not going to hire someone for one year.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
Right, but, but I think the point is that the, the police officer is going to be approximately the same amount next year, whereas this one will be a, will be starting with a new increase.
And to be fair, it doesn't necessarily obligate us, because the next council could do anything they want, but, you know, at least we should say that's the intent.
But it's in the base.
I would actually make a proposal to change something here, which is up in the first line there, additional CIP funding. It's, we propose to increase the amount we're spending there by fifty thousand dollars. This is the last step that we are taking towards fully funding infrastructure, and I would actually propose that we break that up in two years, and that we spend an additional twenty-five thousand instead of fifty this year, and then look to add that, the remaining twenty-five the following year, so spread it out a little bit.
And when you think about that, is there anything that we would be foregoing doing in the coming year that?
Probably.
Yeah. But I would trust them to find whatever the right project was that could be.
Could be deferred.
And, and so many of the things, you know, one year may not make or break it. If it is, then it's a high priority, and they're going to keep doing it anyway.
I am intrigued, but I'm also very cautious about doing that, because the reason that we're doing this is we put off stuff for a long time, so.
Yeah, I hear you, and I, the reason I'm feeling okay about it is because it's still an increase, you know, like, we're still making progress towards, towards it, it's just, it's an eleven-year, where it's like, it's one year longer than. But I, the thing is, in my mind, it frees up money into the next section, because, I mean, I, I would like to not break the bank.
I'm receptive to that suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, me too. I'm getting, I'm getting some, getting a few nods.
I would like to hear some staff feedback, and I.
I mean, I guess my, my concern with this is like the improvements to the lights and sidewalks and all of those, those are like directly noticeable things, along with, you know, the addition of staff and, and things like that, but, I mean, these are things like front porch forum was lit for a while, so, but, and I, I think it's also, like, those are things that are what attract people to Montpelier, so with all of the development that we have coming, and, you know, I, I'm wary of cutting it now to, with the expectation that hopefully next year, the council, whatever that body, you know, whatever we look like next year, will feel similarly that, like, allocating that twenty-five thousand is still a priority.
Okay, question on the process, yes, we have the reserve fund, right? Do we set out, more fully, like state budgets, right? Is a waterfall, that there's a certain amount in the reserve budget, do you have priorities set out that you fund it if you have this much left over? Do we have any such waterfall in this budget?
No, I mean, we don't, not establish that way, we do occasionally fund things out of one-time money out of reserve. For example, the, the money that Jeff was referring to, that the council allocated this year for tree, that came from the reserve, or when we purchased the property on Country Club Road, that was a reserve type thing. So we do use that for those purposes, but actually, the general policy is that we don't use the, the reserve to fund the operating budget, we'll target it to one-time type purchases.
I think we could, and just to address, you know, your press there, Ashley, I mean, we could say, you know, whatever it is that you cut, it can't be the lights.
So the LEDs aren't in there anymore.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair.
For next year, so.
But, yeah, I don't know if we could, I mean, I was, I was hoping to have a vote on the budget tonight, but we could get more feedback on, if, if there are people that are interested in this idea, we could find out what that would look like.
Well, you could, you know, you don't take a final vote until the twenty-fourth.
Oh, yeah.
So what, what, well, it's not, so technically, if we're really following the rules, the pro, which are made to be broken. You would vote to adopt the council's proposed budget, and we would have two public hearings on that proposed budget, and then you vote to finally adopt the budget that goes on the ballot.
So we could still.
So you could, you could, so if you want, you know, if you said, this is our draft budget, our proposed budget, and then we could come back and say, well, here's what we would change for twenty-five thousand, this is what we would adjust, recommend to you, or oh, God, you can't do that, then you could, you have two public hearings to, so you're not committing yourself necessarily, you're saying, here's, here's what we're moving forward with.
Would people generally, in this travel sort of way, feel comfortable moving forward with that assumption, or not so much?
The assumption that we will cut it unless we hear from staff.
Well, right, that it's twenty-five instead of fifty.
It goes into twenty-five tonight.
Right.
With the possibility of change.
That we could increase it later.
Yeah, I would.
You'd rather keep it at 50 now and then hear from staff.
And cut it later, yeah. Because it's always, it's hard to, if we cut it and then say, oh, great, we've got all this money to do this other stuff, and then staff come back and say, no, we really can't, then it's gonna be harder to give up the other stuff.
I mean, true, but.
I guess, what's the same decision?
I guess, I guess I would add that my priorities are with some of the other things. Ashley, do you have something?
Well, I'm just, so I'm looking, and maybe I am misreading this, it's entirely possible, rules are not my best thing. But just in terms of, like, looking where the increases seem to be, street maintenance and construction, there seems to be an increase there. As someone who lives on East State Street, you know, this has been like an ongoing thing with the water main there, but I know that there are other streets that are in dire need as well, and I know it's only, it's $50,000, which is like a substantial sum of money, but sort of compared to the grand scheme of the entire city budget, it's not that large. But to me, those are the kinds of things that you really get a lot out of your investments in, in terms of like visible, tangible things, like people are complaining about, there's a pothole, can you fix this? And instead of saying, well, it's on our list, you know, and hopefully we'll get the funding to, to address this next year, you know, those are, those are things that we can respond to, we can take care of, you know, obviously, understanding that emergencies, like, would be taken care of, you know, either way. But it just seems like, to me, the 50,000 puts us in a place where those things can be addressed, they cannot be sort of deferred any longer, which I can't believe I'm the one saying, like, don't procrastinate, because that's like my best thing. But it just strikes me that those are, those are immediate things that people actually see and can appreciate immediately. And I think, you know, to me, I think there's a lot of benefit in that when, you know, when we see all of the feedback that we see on Front Porch Forum, or Facebook, or Twitter, or, you know, it's, it's generally about things that you can see right now. And I would just, I just wanna be mindful that, that sometimes addressing those now rather than deferring, even though, you know, we may be able to allocate that money differently right now, doesn't sort of generate the same kind of, like, return on investment.
The only thing about the road comparison, Ashley, is like with East State, can't be done, even with the 50,000, because it's a major utility street. And so the streets that are the worst are the worst because they're gonna be so expensive, they've gotta be dug down to the baseline, utilities replaced, and so then you're tying in with grants and all sorts of federal, state, local dollars. So it's not, the $50,000 isn't gonna unfortunately help the worst problems.
Right.
And the priorities in fixing the roads is much more complicated than the $50,000 can handle, that's all.
I know, and I totally appreciate that. I think that was just, that's, that happened to be my sort of, like, tangible.
Every street that's been put off has a reason, so. Well, within the, in the CIP, there's all sorts of measurements of why this street is being left to get really bad because it's gotta be totally invested. And this street, even though it was just done, is now being redone because we wanna maintain the goodness, so it's more complicated, that's all. I just, I just wanna give you, it's a much more complicated picture, I think.
I'm gonna move on unless one of you indicates to me that you are changing amount of time. Okay.
Move on with what assumption?
Yeah, she's gonna move it. That it's 25. Wait.
What? Oh, instead of 50? I would, no, I would, I guess I would like to keep it at 50.
Well, so.
I think she was counting nods.
I'm counting nods, yes.
Oh, okay, I thought you were looking right at me.
No, no, I'm looking at, I'm looking at you, you four.
I'm with the mayor.
And they have to change their minds, like, no, no.
Keeping an open mind, so the nice way with that.
Okay, okay.
We can take, we can, we can take it away, you know, actually, you have this option.
Any further changes to this green section? One once, one twice. Okay, comments from the public on this section?
Well, let's give it a little longer than that, just.
No, that's fair, that's fair.
I think it's the adults who generally want.
Okay, fair enough. All right, we're gonna move on. How are you all doing? Do you need a break?
I love a break.
Okay, we're gonna take a break, and we'll be back and talk about the next section. Ready to go? So I don't know where Bill went.
Hello, Marco.
Hello.
I hate the people that I'm not looking for that went to answer me in this talk, because I'm like, oh, you're not my person.
Okay, so we're gonna.
Working on daycare.
We want it all there.
At the fire station.
I know, right?
With the fire pole?
That's what I told them, I said, well, cut, we'll give you the extra firefighter, but you have to do the daycare at the fire station. And they were all for it, so we have a deal.
There we go. All right, so before we get into the chart that we just developed, I would love, which is, I would like to observe just a starting point for discussion.
Who came up with that idea?
Oh, gosh, I don't know.
The teacher amongst us.
Some silly person. All right, so I would actually love to start with public comments, if there are things that people would like to weigh in on, or questions people would like to ask, we'll start there, so. Dear members of the public.
Kate, you've been waiting, Paige.
I've been waiting. Hi, my name's Kate Stevenson, I'm the chair of the Montpelier Energy Advisory Committee, and I have questions about facilities director position, which I'm really excited about, something we've been talking about for years, and just want to get a little bit of clarity around, you know, what the rationale was behind the idea of starting it in 2020. I'll, I'll just give my, a couple of different questions, and then maybe Bill or other staff can respond, but. So the, the rationale behind the, the starting it only later, what the position actually involves, and whether it has an energy component at all, or if it's only facilities, and just kind of what you envision it to include. And then the other question was whether this budget that we had funded last, this year, .25 FTE for Steve Twombly, and whether that stays consistent, or that goes away with the addition of the new facilities director. So those are a couple of my questions.
Okay, I can answer, I think, all three of them. The, the first one was why the, the April 2020 start? I mean, the, the most direct answer was just financial, we were trying to stay within, keep the overall budget within the 2.5%, and so that was a way to get the position in the door, but not increase it that much this year. But this, the second thought behind it is that we've also proposed to, we're seeking a planning grant, some matching funds to do, to actually do an energy plan with you folks, and thinking that, well, that might not be done immediately, so there could be some time, you know, it's not optimal, but it, that was, that was sort of the rationale. Second part, you asked about the duties of the position, I mean, we, we definitely think it has an energy component, we see, and we spent a long time as a team talking about this. Obviously, we've got a lot of facilities ourselves that need to be taken care of, and those, and energy is one of the biggest things, and we made, I think, a lot of successes as, thanks to you folks, and we'd like to continue doing that. And we're gonna be adding a, you know, presumably a parking structure, we're gonna be adding potentially a new rec facility down the road, you know, it's not like we're gonna have less facilities to be managed. And we also have our district heat system, which is being sort of operated by DPW, but not really being managed, and we see this as a person that could really help run that in the way it should be. So those all have energy aspects. We don't necessarily see this as a person that's gonna know how to develop a strategic plan around energy, but it might be a person that can help put it into place, which is why we're suggesting the separate energy plan versus, you know, it's, it wouldn't be a system.
Who would do this energy plan?
Well, we were hoping, we were looking for a grant to get a planning grant to hire an energy consultant to work with your group, but it would not be you folks doing it, it would be drafted, but obviously you'd be on top of that. But then this person would be a key person to help implement that. Again, I haven't thought it through in fine detail, is, you know, at what point we're doing out in the community is a person who's really good at making sure buildings run, but, you know, of course, I bet you won't get to it. And finally, we do still have Steve in there, in part because we had only recommended part-time funding at this point, and, but also just because he has, he's a huge asset and has, knows a lot about our buildings and those kinds of things, so we, we had left that in. I think I answered your question.
Yeah, so I just make a couple of comments, you know, one, in a, in a recommendation to, to accelerate this, and, you know, seems like there is potentially some interest in the, the optional part to push this forward to the start of FY 2020, but I just wanna remind the council of the net zero 2030 goal that you all adopted, or that the council adopted back in 2014, and that was reinforced in the resolution this fall, which, you know, just as a reminder, that 2030 is getting closer every day. And so what the resolution called for was putting together this 10-year plan, and, and so my concern about pushing this out till April of 2020 is just that, you know, we, we lose that whole other year of starting to implement projects. We haven't discussed it as a committee, but my personal feeling is that I feel like whoever is in this role should be very involved in the development of the energy plan, it shouldn't be something that is just like written by a consultant and then handed off to someone that is hired, because as we've learned in the last year or two of implementing projects and getting the revolving loan phoned off the ground, like, there, a lot, these projects are very detailed, they require a lot of conversations with the city staff, there's a lot of work that has to happen to kind of get them shovel-ready. And my concern about having a consultant come in and kind of doing this high-level analysis is that they're, that they, you know, you really have to have someone who can get down in the weeds and, and get into the details, because the 10-year plan needs to have a lot more details for it to really have a chance of succeeding. So, you know, energy planning grant, great, having a consultant to help, wouldn't it be great to have the facilities director on board to work hand-in-hand with that consultant to really make a plan that's effective and something that we can really get, get going more quickly? So those are just a few thoughts from me.
Great, thank you. More comments, yeah?
Hi, I'm Polly Nickel, I'm co-chair of the Housing Task Force, so not surprisingly, I'm here to talk about the funding for the Housing Trust Fund. And first, I wanted to express appreciation for the $75,000 recommendation, that's the highest that's ever been recommended, so not to be ungrateful, but I also wanted to advocate for the additional funding, for enough money to fund both Taylor Street and the First Time Homebuyers program. And, and also to remind you that a month or so ago, when you adopted the new policy governing the Housing Trust Fund, it's, the process is that applications come in, the advisory committee meets and makes recommendations to the council, so it was a little taken aback to see, you know, recommendations targeted to specific projects or programs. But anyway, that's, that's sort of an aside.
I'm sorry, Polly, do you mean the fact that we listed First Homeowners and the Christchurch separate, they shouldn't be separate?
Well, the, well, the policy that you adopted says you get recommendations from the committee, and then the decision is made about what it goes for, not that it kind of works in reverse.
So I'll take the blame for that, I, I understood that was the basis for the funding request, was split up those three ways. So I just tried to make sure when we were recommending breaking funding, it made logical sense to go with what had been requested. So if that was not right, then certainly the council could put whatever number they, they want in there, so.
And whatever we approve should not necessarily be a mandate to fund a particular project or not.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I also just wanted to tell you about a conversation that I had with Eileen Peltier from Downstreet, who couldn't be here tonight, because I asked her, you know, are both of these programs really important to Downstreet? And she said yes, and she said, you know, although they obviously want the money for Taylor Street, because it's, it's come from them so far, and, and will come out of their development.
But I'm sorry, by Taylor Street, do you mean what we're referring to is Christchurch?
No, the, the 75,000.
Oh, the additional, the, we've already heard, okay, yeah.
The part that's already budgeted. But she said that home buying in Montpelier is absolute, has been absolutely crazy this past year, that they've, that they've never seen anything like it. She, and I think this might be a slight exaggeration, but she said, a house goes on the market, and people get there within five minutes and make an offer, and that the First Time Homebuyers program has really made it possible for people of modest means to have a chance to buy a home in Montpelier, because it's just so tight. And the Planning Office did a survey of existing users of the program, so this is a little bit old, but in the survey, 75% of the people said it was absolutely essential, either absolutely essential to their ability to buy a home, or very important to buy a home in Montpelier. And for that other 25%, I think maybe, you know, tweaks could be made, so we're, we're, we're not giving money to people who absolutely don't need it. The other thing Eileen said is, which is kind of shocking, is that the housing affordability situation in Montpelier has actually gotten worse in spite of everything that's been done, because the demand is just so great. And I wish I had cut out the article, but there was, when Aziana House and another business closed, there was an article either in The Bridge or The Times Argus, and one of the reasons cited was difficulty in finding employees, and one of the reasons cited as difficulty for finding employees was lack of housing. So, I mean, you all know where I'm coming from, but I think it's, it's really an important investment for Montpelier for a lot of reasons, and I, I would urge you to fund it at a higher level.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right, so looking at the lists that we have up there, I don't wanna understand all of those to necessarily be votes, but as a place to start discussion. So, I mean, if we were just counting up a number of.
X's.
Of X's, it would seem that at least the Christchurch one has the, the most, is that, is that a fair assessment? So it seems like that one, we're probably pretty much all in agreement, I mean, unless you.
Donna, what's your half on that?
The amount that was listed here, I was gonna cut it in half, so.
10,000?
Yeah, 10,000, that's what I thought.
But you wanted, oh, you didn't do First Time Homebuyers, okay.
And looks like you've got six for art synergy, half funding.
Do you, do you wanna make a case for half the Christchurch, or? Well, I wanted to give it something, but I wanted to give other things something, too, to get them, like, the art project, to me, is really important, that we start an art fund as a placeholder to build on, so that's, yeah, the priorities.
Is it, is it safe to put an X for the full amount for the, for the Christchurch line? Okay, seen a bunch of nods, so I think we can put that one in.
Got it.
Okay.
I'm on it.
So that's 25? Yeah. Okay.
20, I should.
20.
Wrong line, 20.
So one hypothesis is that we can start from the top and work our way down, another hypothesis is that we can go with, sort of, there's, there's a bunch of things that have four X's by them, some, some even have five X's, so should we talk about it in that?
Art synergy, actually, is six.
Oh, did I miss that?
The half.
Art, oh, the, the half, oh, yeah, okay, so is everybody down with art synergy at at least half the funding? Okay, so we can safely, a bunch of nods there, okay, so we're gonna put an X by that one. Parks, so one of the things that's confusing to me about this here team is that the second line, new parks part-time position, only had two X's, but the full-time position had but the Full-Time Position had five. And that is illogical because the point of the way this was split up was that it was, I'm going to get this wrong, 20,000, yeah, right, okay.
Well, it just meant they wanted to go straight to the...
Right, so, okay.
If you have support for the full-time, then you definitely have support for the half.
So is it, is it true that if you put an X by the full-time New Parks position, that you also are intending to put an X by, basically you want to fund it at 55,000 rather than 30,000?
Correct.
I just want to make sure everyone's correct.
Correct. And if, assuming we were going in not knowing what other people's votes were, we'd be saying, well, I'll go for the full thing, but if there aren't enough votes for the full-time position,
I would go for a half.
Right. So I thought that was like a one, you could vote one time, and if you voted for the half, if you voted for the half, you wouldn't support funding the whole, but if you voted for the whole, you'd support either.
Okay, that was a different understanding than mine, read of the situation, but I understand what you're saying. So, is...
So I think that's a yes for full.
So I think that's, I think that's a lot of people being very interested in this, in the full-time New Parks position. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So one hypothesis, team, is that if we go through this, we might end up with a, were anybody's votes contingent on like, you know... Well, actually, I'm just going to keep going. Let's talk about the facilities director. There are five X's by that one.
I actually, so I feel that it may be more honest and budget-impact-wise to actually fund it at the full-time level. So this is one that I have less of a problem than others with supporting.
Put a half an X up?
I mean, really, that's what we're committing ourselves to. The next council is not going to cut this position after somebody's been there for a quarter of a year.
Okay.
They just might.
Well, that could happen.
I'm sorry, just to be clear. So I'm not, there were enough, there was enough support in that anyway to go...
We're at 3.8% or 4.5%?
We're at 3.8, isn't that...
Uh, let's see.
Isn't that the one we're looking at?
4.3 cents and 4%.
Okay.
It's this one here at the bottom.
3.8%. I got to tell you, team, I, my hope was to not get to four.
Yeah, so the budget was 3.8%, the tax rate would be four, almost 4.4 cents, so 4.4% tax increase.
Sorry, what?
This is, this is the budget increase, 3.8.
Yeah.
This is the tax rate, 4.0, almost 4.4 cents. This is the tax, the percent of tax rate increase, 4% right there.
Then why...
So the total budget increase percentage is lower than the tax rate percentage increase?
Right.
Okay. Again, I was, I was hoping to not hit four.
Well, we can put it all in and start taking them out.
So those, the, the things that we've just talked about are relatively big items. The remainder might not actually make that much of a difference. Like Montpelier Alive at 10,000, I'm trying to think what else, what else has, what else has...
Montpelier Alive only has three and a half votes.
New, hang on, New, sorry, which one only has three?
Montpelier Alive.
Three and a half.
Oh, it's three and a half, okay, yeah. Oh, so we could, interesting, that's, well, do you want to talk about family care? Because that has four. What, actually, I need to go up there and have to write on this. I'm not sure that this was the best solution here, team.
You don't like your whiteboard?
I don't know. I'm not sure how I feel about it. How do you all feel about it? Well, we can talk about it. Don't hold hands. Okay, so what have we, what have we talked about?
We need to either mic this or have the camera or something. We've got to do this.
There you go.
I got it, I'm on it. Is it, you've got that?
Yeah, I'm on it.
Okay, okay, great. All right, so what have we talked about? We just, I just need to like, I need to just mark this off visually. So we've talked about this one, and we've talked about this one, and this one. New Parks Position, we talked about that, we talked about this. And we haven't done anything else. Is that, is my, am I correct?
But I think it's fair to say that full funding is off the table for art synergy because almost every, yeah, five people said yay to half-funding.
Actually, I'm just going to leave it.
Well, okay.
Yeah, no, we've, is that, is that fair? Team, we're going to leave that one out? So we've decided something about that.
Hold tough, I'm glad. Bargain.
You said half.
Down below. Was this the question? I didn't see it either.
You wait to hear the fourth vote on something and you won't give it unless you get here.
Okay, well, the next one that has the next highest amount is the family care.
Well, maybe some of those amounts can't be half, maybe they have to be more adjusted. And why don't we look at family care and develop a policy this year and funding next?
I would also just point out, the city doesn't have paid like parental leave either. So you can use vacation, well, you can use vacation time, but there's no like actual parent leave. So like if you have, if you have a baby or adopt or you grow your family or you're dealing with caring for a loved one, you have to use your, your other time. It's not a, like some organizations actually offer like a separate kind of leave.
Paid leave, yeah.
Paid family leave, as opposed to using your vacation or sick time.
If you follow the federal guidelines, you just don't pay all this.
Well, we don't pay, she's, she's right, that we don't, right, you, you use your, your leave time.
So it's like...
So, yeah, it depends on who, so if you are a woman and you give birth, then you do get disability pay, whatever's allowed for that period of time. And then you can supplement that with your leave time if you, if you're not, if, if you're the, if you're taking paternal leave or if you have adoptive leave, then you have to use your leave time. Or if you have a sick person, you have, you're allowed the 12 weeks, but you have to use your...
And we can, we can use sick time.
So you don't lose your job, you just don't get paid.
Correct. And, and we allow you to use sick time, and most people have pretty, you know, high sick times.
But it's just, I mean, I think it's a, it's a broader conversation to me, which is why I didn't put an X on there because it's something, I think I had asked about it a while ago, but there have been so many other things. But it's something that a lot of people have approached me about and asked, like, does the city offer this? And, you know, you can, like, like most other unfortunately employers around, you know, in the United States, it's not, that's not a separate kind of leave, it's just you can use whatever you've accrued.
Yeah, so actually, I didn't, I'm supportive of this idea. I didn't put an X next to it because I was under the impression that your committee, and I'm forgetting the full, the Social and Economic Justice Committee, was going to consider what it would take to provide childcare at meetings. And I don't know, have you gotten a chance to discuss that, or is that even on your...
No, we're sort of in flux a little bit right now. So we're, we're trying to navigate just a new committee and sort of what that looks like.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's actually on the council agenda for next week to talk about, about the charge.
I'll take my X away from family care.
I just, I want that to be...
I want to discuss it.
I want it to, I want it to be a bigger conversation with the city, though, about what, what the city is doing, like generally with regard to like fostering family growth and development and as an employer, you know, how we can better support that.
Isn't that something that comes up at contract time?
For, for those employees that are contracted, yeah.
Yeah, this specific line item, I would see applying to members of the public who wanted to come. Or maybe employees in the case if anybody here had children, they would make sure they had them watched while they were spending their time in a meeting, late hours with us. So I, I see it as a bit of a pilot, you know. I don't know if I'd be willing to take my X off it and wait till June 30th, 2020 to actually have anything allotted to this. I think this would be a good trial period. Other cities, you know, if schools are closed in the area, they provide childcare for all their employees during those days. So I think this is, this is pretty modest in comparison to a proposal like that. But I think it sends a message that we actually do support civic engagement and people coming out to these meetings. You can hear the crickets right now, I don't know how many people are watching at home, but maybe it would result in higher turnout.
I'm supportive, but I just want to have a discussion about what we're actually going to do and I feel like we haven't thought, we haven't taken the time to develop this a little bit more.
So this is, I'm just, I just happened to look up and see what other cities, Pittsburgh actually offers this, but it's offered for a limited number of meetings at up to 20 city-sponsored community meetings per year, such as budget meetings or public hearings. They also offer it in, for employees, city employees, when there are snow days. But, so there are templates that exist.
So I, um...
Maybe I should add an X then. I'm, I misinterpreted, I, I thought you were speaking for council members only, so like if a council member had a childcare-related issue, but if it's open to everyone.
But it could be something, you know, for anybody who is attending the meetings.
Yes, okay, that changes, I would put an X for that. I didn't understand it that way, but I would put an X for that.
And with a cap at 2,000, I mean, it is also just $2,000.
$2,000 and, you know, FY 2020s, we have a little time to figure out some details before we even start spending.
Right.
Probably grants that exists somewhere or something.
I understand, but just that it's not like tomorrow.
I want to move to talking about Montpelier Alive. We have three and a half votes for that, yes?
I would want to suggest, and it looks like Donna's done a partial amount for Montpelier Alive. I think they asked for 10,000. I, I thought the request was fairly reasonable, but I want to throw a partial amount on the table there.
I can get behind a partial amount.
My understanding, it's been level-funded for about 20 years, is that right?
That's right, almost since its inception.
The DID, something, who changed?
The DID changed, and we did bump it up. It was flat 20, and then they went up to 22 to cover some costs that essentially we were charging them. So sort of a, we'll pay you and you pay us back. But I think it was for that specific purpose, I think it was to pay their parking and their, their copier fee or something.
Can we just make the point, I think they're doing a lot for one staffer who's not working 40 hours a week and getting those extra hours would make a big difference. I'm on the board, there's a lot of emails flowing back and forth on that board. So with Dan having a newborn kid and everything, you know, you know, he's, he's got a lot of pressures, huh?
Well...
You went the full 10.
What do you...
You want to take five.
I guess my, and the only reason that I didn't include that as a priority, it just, I'm feeling a little like there's a lot of overlap between things. And I think Montpelier Alive does the thing that we all want our city to do and to have. But I'm, what I'm struggling with is there are other, other entities, other groups, other organizations. I think the council just recently even approved, you know, one group forming a 501(c)(3) that does similar things. And so it just, it seems like there are other funding options out there, and I want the city to support Montpelier Alive, but I also feel like the city's putting lots of money in other places that do similar type things, and I feel like Montpelier Alive does it best. And so I would like to fund Montpelier Alive at the polar rate, but I just feel like there are so many other places that are requesting city funds that are kind of, to me, duplicating efforts and allocating funds to organizations that do similar things. And so I just, I don't, I don't feel like I know enough about like how all of these other things tie in because Montpelier Alive seems to put on all these other things, but then these other organizations are contributing. And so if the money's coming from the city, like why isn't it all just going to one place from the city? Why isn't it all going to Montpelier Alive?
So I, I'll try to answer that.
Okay.
Montpelier Alive was formed by the city to be, and they are a designated downtown promotion entity. And so we have, you know, they are the ones who are charged, for example, with managing the Downtown Improvement District funds and those sorts of things and put on events. Doesn't mean they're exclusive, if somebody else wants to put down, on a downtown event, then they can, although they usually coordinate with Montpelier Alive and they communicate with us. They're basically our, our partner for downtown sustainability. Not just, it's not just events, it's a lot of the other things that they do to try to, you know, they work on things. The Montpelier Foundation that you referred to, we have actually never put money into that. They, they are formed to get fundraising and it's specifically for bricks and mortar projects. So, for example, the downtown, Montpelier Alive could go to the foundation to seek funding to build, to put in benches or to, to put in a statue or something like that. So they, they could work in tandem with one another, but it doesn't mean that they're exclusive. And we have the Montpelier Development Corporation, which is really intended to implement the Economic Development Strategic Plan. And in fact, when it was set up, it was set up that, I think, five of the board members were appointed by the city council and four by Montpelier Alive. So there would be, there would be a coordination between groups so that there was not a, you know, they weren't stepping on each other's toes, and I think that's worked pretty successfully. And I don't know who else might be in that mix. So I mean, I'm not sure, you know, you should pick whatever funding level, but I do think Montpelier Alive has certainly been a worthwhile partner. And you're right, they've been level-funded for a long time, with the exception of the DID that does give them. But they don't use that, specifically do not use that for any staff operating cost. That all goes to like advertising for downtown or specific, you know. We, we get a budget for DID money and approve it each year, and it doesn't include their overhead.
They're not allowed to use DID money for overhead?
We've never allowed them. We, we, the council board, you know...
Yeah, but they could put it in their budget, when they were here before, I was amazed they had no administrative clause attached to DID.
Right. And I think that had been the expectation of at least the prior council when DID went in, was that it was going to be a direct investment to the downtown, since the downtown, you know, the downtown businesses and buildings are taxed that extra money. So it wasn't, you know, we're just going to, I think there was some concern amongst those in the downtown that going to raise the taxes on our buildings and it's just going to pay for, you know, more city staff, even though they're not really city staff. But it, so the commitment was, it's going to be, we will give you a direct budget for how that money's used and we will, it'll be, you know, marketing money and that kind of stuff, so. I'm not saying what's right or wrong, I'm trying to explain what happened.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sort of thinking along the lines of, like, why not build it in?
For us, give you extra money to do the DID. I think it should be part of that.
If you, because yours, your version is just a little bit different than mine. Here, if you add an X to the Montpelier Alive line...
Yeah.
I wanted to see if that increases the 3.8. It's not.
Oh, that's great.
Of course it's great.
So, so team, I, I'm in a place where like there's, how should I say this? When we put all of our X's up there, that's sort of like our initial thoughts, right? And then some things might have got like more votes than, or more X's, I should say, than perhaps we individually voted for, right? So I don't know if you have a cap, but I, my hope was to keep it below four, around 3.5 was, was kind of my goal. And so while I have an X next to Montpelier Alive, I'm, I mean, I might just erase it because I, I, yeah. Because that, that is also a goal that I have. And if that's, but knowing that, we could build it into DID money.
Well, and the other piece is also, like we mentioned earlier, taking those community enhancements funds and giving them to Montpelier Alive and saying, if you think the best use of this is more staff time versus an event or whatever, I mean...
Yeah, right. I don't know, but... Is there going to be any regulatory or statutory reason we can't do that?
No, I don't think so, but I, you know, they still have to fundraise. I mean, the, the cost, for example, of July 3rd, I mean, are $3,000, whatever's a, you know, a pittance compared to the money they raise. So if they choose to use that for staff, that's 3,000, they've got to raise for that event elsewhere. I don't know about the winter or the, whatever they used it for this year. That, that was just something that's been in there, and I think they have had a little bit of discretion on how they use that. But, I mean, so...
I think I would be more comfortable with doing that.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Dan's hours are going up 5 a week. That doesn't necessarily secure them? He might have to stay at 30 hours a week, right?
I mean, that would be a decision of the board. I don't know how they're planning to finance. You know, I don't know that, that the $20,000 that we give them funds him now, I think. But I'm not that familiar with their budget, so.
I could maybe, I could do 5 now, and then find 5 from DID. Would that put 5 under 3.9? But still, it's 3.9.
What?
So are you talking about budget? When you say 3.9, you're talking about budget or tax rate?
She's talking, talking about budget.
The, the line right next to the...
Okay, just make sure, because they are different numbers.
Right, so, yeah, right, because we're at 4.1.
So the 3.9 is the...
We haven't, we haven't taken out, oh, you see.
3.9 is the budget. This is the number of cents on the tax rate, and that's the percent of the tax rate. So we're at just under 4.5 cents and a 4.1% tax increase.
So in, so the way you counted, we are over 4.
Well, I, depends, which of those are the...
Who cares?
We are, we're at 3.9, 4.5, or 4.1, depending which piece of data you want.
How about 10 at the new...
Most people look at the tax rate, though.
Hold on. Where were we, can you put a second?
The 4, yeah.
Uh, you're saying to, to cut our, from 25 to 10?
Well, maybe I'm...
I'll argue that.
I can also...
Put that up there.
So we have art synergy in there twice, though?
Well, there's a, there's first half and a second half. You reach 25, so.
And there's no...
No X next to this one.
Yeah, so it's only 25 and not?
Right.
Okay.
This is actually the column, this one right here that's being added.
Okay.
That's the request.
Okay.
So.
So Donna has made a suggestion that we look at reducing art synergy.
Because when I said half, I was saying half of the 25 that was listed there. I was thinking closer to 10, 12.
I thought, 25 was half of their ask, though, right?
I, I know, but when I put half, I meant half of the 25.
Half of the half, I got you.
Okay. So you wanted to fund it as, like, three quarters?
Or 10, 1 quarter.
One quarter.
Oh, 1 quarter. Yeah, in my, in my, in my pieces, anyway, I just rounded it off to 10.
Yeah.
So, half of 25, 12 and a half, so 12 and a half?
She, she rounded it down to 10.
I just rounded, oh, 10. Just like Montpelier Alive, like, man, I put it in as 5.
Um, what is the tax rate increase if we're at 10?
Well, as I recall, uh, our, our tax revenue is roughly $10 million. So, every $10,000 is a 10th of a percent.
Yeah, it's, it's more like about 9.
Yeah, almost, almost 10, yeah.
But we can look. We're at art synergy, so you want to put that at 10,000, you said?
No.
Hire the facilities director in October.
I, I know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, well, that's, well, and it's, and it's less than 4.
Yeah.
But Rosa just, facilities director, part of what I thought.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I did not put an X on starting at, right at the beginning of the year. And, and part of the reason for that was because of my appetite for other things.
Yes, yes.
Which we haven't even talked about.
I just threw that in.
But also, because...
I did, well, I tried to, I was just looking to see.
Go ahead, go ahead, Jeff.
I, I think it's a worthy thing to do if, if we have the person start on July 1st, will the person, will the project and the work be sufficiently, uh, uh...
Laid out?
Fleshed out to usefully have the person working full-time starting July 1st? As opposed to, say, January 1st?
So, uh, I don't know that I can speak terribly specifically to this, but I, Kate and I were talking about this last night, um, and I think, and she left to eat dinner. So, I'll just say what I think she would say, which is, yes, if someone starts July 1st, there are projects that they can start working on right away. Not least figuring out the 10-year net zero plan. And from her point of view and from my point of view, the earlier we really start on that plan, the better. Uh, so I would, I would argue strongly for July 1st.
Okay. I was surprised by all the support for the new parks position in addition to, the full-time parks position, in addition to the new trees position. And in my mind, having a full-time trees position potentially frees up some of the current parks folks to be doing more parks, like, they, those over the years can be used back and forth as is needed. And I understand the parks director saying that they need more, but the city manager's recommendation was not for that. So I was surprised that there was as much support for the full-time position as, as there was.
I was also surprised by that. I, um, I think even, um, I, I guess I would be more interested, I mean, I didn't vote for that at all, but I would be more interested in a, like, a part-time position there. See how it goes and see if that person is, in fact, overwhelmed and needs more time, and we can reevaluate that. I would, I would rather take smaller steps in that role.
I see we need somebody for just the bore, let alone, the park needs a full-time person without this emergency, the ash bore. So, I disagree with that.
Uh, Jeff?
A couple of thoughts I have about that are, one, in part of the discussion, someone, and I don't even remember who it was, said, "Well, we're not gonna have any more total acres of parkland in 10 years."
I suggested that that was a possibility.
Than we do now.
To speculate.
And I, I don't think people, I don't think people on the council mostly want that. I think people, people on the council mostly want to actually have more parkland, but it's not happening in the next year necessarily. So, I think we can potentially live with not adding that full-time position this year. The other part of, the other thing that, uh, that Jeff said, that, uh, that I understood what he was saying, and I'm not sure everyone else caught, was that he, uh, he said that they've made, I think he said that they've made more progress than he thought they might on, on hazard trees. And I believe from other things I've heard, that that's because the, the new tree person they've hired is a cert, hired as a certified arborist with years of experience climbing trees. And so, they've been able to do things with trees that they haven't been able to in previous years. And what they've done, what we learned when we did the tour of the, of the parks and the trees, is that a lot of what they've had to do to do hazard trees is to hire a tree service to use a crane to go up and cut down those trees. And that's, they're not limited to only doing that now for some of the trees.
So, Jeff, did I hear you say that you'd be willing to go with the part-time?
I would, I would go for half instead of full.
But Jeff is retiring, he said, June 2019.
Yeah.
This June. So, he's been doing the job of two people. And so, he, his salary is already there, so one full-time will just begin to replace him.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd be interested to see how that plays out, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's...
But so, well, he, certainly, there's no question about Jeff's work ethic, but we don't know how somebody else is gonna work, or how officials are gonna work, or what things they'll get in, involved in or not. You, I mean, I, you know, a, as you can see, our, our team supported the tree position and not the, not necessarily the, the additional parks. Again, feeling it could be stepped up over time, and let's see. Because they would be going from 2 to 3 this year, and see how that worked, and if that was unnecessary, then going from 3 to 4. But obviously, it's on the list because you all had expressed an interest in it, and, uh, we're certainly willing to do.
I had another question about something Jeff said, where he said that he's got roughly 1,000 working hours left before his retirement date, and he has booked 960 hours of comp time. Presumably, that might mean that he could work another week and then stay home for the rest of his time, withdraw his pay, which he's not gonna do. But, say he gets, gets to the, uh, his retirement date, and he hasn't drawn down any of that comp time. Does he just lose that? Or does he get paid for it?
I don't have the answer to that question. That was a...
Typically, in the, in the department head positions, comp time is not a compensable item on the structure.
Okay.
That's what I assumed, yeah.
And it's usually only capped at 40, which is why, so, but I wasn't familiar, you know. But we'll see. I don't know what the arrangements are with him, so.
Well, and just in terms of new park development, I, I don't know that we've actually made a plan for the property that we purchased, the, the last remaining structure across the way. But if, if we do want to turn that into a, a park, or, you know, I just, I appreciate that, you know, for, for right now, may, you know, maybe a part-time would make sense. And I'm not saying I'm opposed to a part-time. If that's sort of where we, we settle up, that's where we settle up. But I just want to be mindful that that's gonna take a lot of work on the city's behalf if we, if the council does decide that that's going to become a thing. Plus, we've got Confluence Park in the making, which would, in theory, require city time. And, um, and so I just, I want to be mindful that while we, we don't have that right now, that is something that's sort of in the works.
Absolutely. There's no question. We've got, we've got Confluence Park and whatever, however big it ends up being.
Right.
Uh, something along Old Country Club Road. There's always Saban's pasture as a potential future, or something on the other side of the river. You know, it sounds like we're not really gonna do the Stonewall Meadows piece, but we've talked about something over there, or smaller neighborhood works. No doubt that we're, we, we, we would desire to have more parkland, but I, so it's, it's like, there's a lot of things that we'd like to do, but how do we process, you know, how do we, you know?
It's just, I want the council to be aware that if we do decide to, to sort of grow those areas, that that's also going to require staff time to get those to where...
Even without growing, it's gonna take more than one extra person that what they now have with the tree person to deal when the ash really get going. When they all start getting affected, it's gonna take a lot of extra time.
I want to, so the, the base budget, does that, uh, take into account the fact that Jeff is retiring?
Yes.
Okay.
How much did you reduce, but minor?
Because it wasn't... I don't want to give you a specific amount, but, but there, I did reduce the, the position to what would be considered an entry-level department head position rather than a veteran. So I, within the scale, if, if it was 80, I moved it to 70, or if it was 70 to 60. Yeah, so it was, within the range of the, assuming it would be a new leadership position coming in at the start of the scale.
Um, I want to check in about some of the other things that we haven't talked about yet. And, um, knowing that it can all still be in flux, that's okay. So, shall we, I, I think we should probably talk about the First Time Home Buyers Program. They've had three votes. Do, anybody want to make a case for that?
I mean, if I have to choose, if I have to choose between the two, I would say Christchurch funding, because that's focused on affordable, like, rentals. But I'm also curious, and I, admittedly, I have not, that's not been sort of like where my attention has been focused. But when would that money be drawn on for the Christchurch?
Not for at least three years.
Yeah, I can, I can talk about this a little bit, because I think that calling it Christchurch funding is a bit of a misnomer. When the Housing Task Force has been coming in with the funding requests, what we've talked about is putting money into a couple of different areas. One is the, to keep the First Time Home Buyers Program running on a year-to-year basis. And two is to, every year, make a certain contribution to a fund balance, which, over a period of two or three or four years, would build up enough to be Montpelier's contribution to a multifamily affordable housing project. And we're talking, using Christchurch as a shorthand for that, but it could be that that project doesn't go forward, or it could be that some other project comes up that really is the one that looks like what we should do. But it's, the idea is that if we, we gradually add money to that fund, so that each year, so that by the time there's a project ready to, to use it, there's money to put into it. Yeah, 'cause, you know, the land trust only has a certain amount of capacity to do projects. So they, even if there were five things that they could do, they couldn't do five new housing projects in one year. And so, the, uh, the First Time Home Buyers project, or program, and, you know, there's a difference between a program and a project, but the pro, it, I think it has been beneficial in, in reaching its goals, which is to enable or facilitate young families to move into the city and likely draw down state education fund money when, when those kids wind up in the, in the public schools. But it's also hard for that, for a program like that to, to really work if, if they don't know from year to year whether they're gonna have a program or not.
So it's just around, what, what amount of money do you want to put in the housing pot? Because they're gonna decide and come to us with their right questions.
Right, and the Housing Task Force thought all of them were important, and I agree.
It was complicated this year, because we'd made a $75,000 commitment to a housing project already. So how, you know, to do that, plus sustain the, um, the First Time Home Buyers, and then start putting money away. I think the feeling was, next year, we won't have the $75,000. So if we did the same 150 next year, you'd have 90 on top of the 60. First time home buyer, you put those two away for two years, that's 180 plus, then you get $200,000 in three years, that you can invest in another project, whether it's Christchurch or something else. I mean, it was, the, the thinking made sense, so it's just a question of funding.
Now, the Housing Trust Fund will, at some point, start to get some money back into it from the loans that it has made that are repayable, right?
Yeah.
Because of the change that was made this year?
Yeah.
So presumably not for a little while.
That's, we'll, we'll ways out, you know, but yeah. Because I recall, those are repayable upon sale.
Yes.
So, you know, certainly, we expect and hope people will move here and stay here. But I also know that when I moved to Montpelier, I only stayed in my first house for five or six years.
So, $60,000 also felt like a lot to me, but they're given out in $10,000 increments, is that right? I mean, this is, this is where, I mean, I, uh, I could picture, uh, like, what if, I, I know we were talking about, like, when does the facilities person start? But like, we could be also having that conversation too, around the, um, the parks position. Like, what if the parks position didn't start in July? I'm not sure if that makes much sense.
That was actually one of the things we looked at when we, when we, uh, when we started splitting it up, and we, we thought about, well, if we, if we split the, the parks position up and didn't have, you know, this funding year starts in July anyway. So, you get through this summer, see how it all goes, and then you've got the winter, and then have them start following spring for, you know, or early spring for the next season. But then we've also had a chance to see how it worked without them. So that was one, one version of splitting it, but we weren't, we didn't settle on that. We were probably, I'd say there was division in the room. We were probably, I'd say there was division in the room about that, just whether it should be full-time or part-time, or whether it should be divided yearly. So we just split it up as sort of one or the other, uh, without a specific time.
So a lower amount is part-time starting later?
Could be. Like I said, we didn't actually settle on that. It was just one option that was considered. So that is, that's a possibility, but it's not specifically, we specifically didn't recommend it that way like we did with the facilities position. But that was one thought.
And the same problem with the facilities position, then you're obligating yourself in the future to keep it.
Yeah. Um, any thoughts on that, do you? I'm trying to like find, like what if it's not sixty thousand dollars? Like what if it's some other amount? But then I, I would wanna trade for something.
There were votes for it. There were only three for that one.
Sorry, I heard.
Which one? Oh, the, that was during time.
That's right. I would back them both. Okay.
Well, I, well, that's just...
They need to weave a little bit.
Yeah, we do. I, I mean, I was trying to see if there could be four for that, but with, I, I, like, I would be willing to, you know, put my X behind that if we were gonna reduce something else.
I don't know which X you're putting, so state the topic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would, I would be willing to go for like...
Is this, we have numbers here. Is it like the, do you have numbers suggestions to put in here?
Well, sure. So like, I, I would suggest maybe, um, uh, twenty thousand or thirty thousand towards the first time home buyers program, but then reducing the parks position by twenty or thirty thousand, which basically brings it down back to the part-time.
Like to the...
Yeah. Which I know is not...
Part-time parks.
Yeah.
Half of the housing.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, I think that would, uh...
Yeah. And you're leaving the additional twenty or you're taking that twenty out?
So I'm...
Now in the housing. We have twenty under the housing now, whichever line it is.
Leaving that, leaving that twenty, but, uh, increasing that by another twenty by reducing, um, the, the, the parks position by twenty.
So do you...
Takeout.
I think that's Bill's, uh, yeah.
Yeah. So that gives them fifty if beyond seventy-five.
The other thing is that we've effectively made the decision on art synergy, and I'm not sure that we ever really made that decision.
That's fair.
I mean, I'm fine with it, but I know that that wasn't...
I think that should be at least to twenty-five.
Oh, you, you mean about like funding at ten?
Twenty-five wasn't there, wasn't, nothing was listed until my ten went in. It wasn't in the second column.
Yeah, it was, it was...
It was on the high.
It was, it had enough votes for twenty-five.
Oh, good.
But now we're up again.
I lowered it. Probably just put it back.
Yeah.
Check.
Sorry, what are you objecting to?
Donna, I think I'm looking at the second line for each of those. So the full-time parks position got eliminated, but the...
That's right. You took thirty-five away and you added thirty...
But there's still a part-time parks.
So you only get rid of five thousand dollars. Yeah, there's, there is, uh, that five thousand.
Right.
Oh, fifty thousand dollars for housing.
Yeah, so I just changed this to, to thirty here because that triggers the X. I'll, I'll put the original amount over here to make it more obvious that that's what...
But you got it from two places. Fifty thousand dollars for housing or whatever topic they decide.
Well, we could change...
So the part-time parks would be thirty-five thousand.
No, they only had twenty for part-time.
The thirty-five is when it went to full-time, then you added benefits and everything else. So it was, that's why it jumped. It wasn't a fifty-fifty split.
Part-time.
But they all have X's.
Yeah, you know, I will do that though. I will make a...
Your interest column.
It's if there's an X by it, it's counted.
Part-time.
I'm gonna just put all the housing trust fund in one place.
I don't know. I have to kind of think I'm with Donna on that. I was a part-time employee for the state and there's no such thing. I mean, I was working forty hours plus a week and getting paid.
It's terrible.
At a, as a part-time salary, not hourly. So I know that there's, there's difference, but...
So, but then, but then maybe nothing towards the first time home buyer program? Or really like additional money taken towards?
We're, I think that's really misleading. Whatever money they get, they're gonna decide, which is their priority of what comes in.
Sure. So it's either twenty or fifty.
Well, I don't think that's really true because I think that the money for Taylor Street is really committed.
Yes, we know that, that's up there.
But it's up there, but yeah.
But it's the only thing that's committed. I mean, that's, and Molly, Polly said the same thing. Our own guidelines to them says the same thing. We give them up, uh, money and then they study what's going on in the marketplace and come with their recommendations and then we approve it.
Or not.
Or not.
I think the confusion in the past has been that the council has done this process and said first time home buyers program.
Yes.
And then they go through and do their recommendations, and then it's really difficult for the council at that point to change those recommendations because we've already said this here. So if the appetite from the council is to do, to put money aside for a big future project, I think we need to make that clear here. And then if they come to us and say, actually, we think we should do this instead, then the council at that point can make that decision. But I think it's really important during this part of the process to make it clear that this is what we think the priority should be. Because I remember last year trying to make that argument after the fact and it was...
Yeah. I disagree with you. We just did their bylaw change to make it their recommendation coming to us. So we're front-ending it. I don't think we should. We should give them, we, we may think of it in our minds, we, we wanna think about this much money so they can do first time and they can do big projects, but I don't think we should, and our, their own governing stuff that we just passed.
So I will meet you halfway there and say if we struck first time home buyers program from increased housing trust fund and said, we're just increasing the housing trust fund by X amount.
Yes.
That would solve my problem, which appears that...
Well, maybe we should do, maybe we should do, just put it as like a lump sum.
Yeah.
Just one, one...
Yes, I just, I just put them all together, yeah, on the funding.
Okay.
And I really think that what Bill did earlier was a very smart thing to enable people to, the council to understand what connects to what. But, uh, but in the end, we're just talking about dollars.
And then, but then that, I mean, I will, I was only willing to do that if we, if it wasn't a full-time parks position, but...
But it's not.
And it's not.
And let me talk about that full-time versus part-time thing because someone made the observation that for this coming fiscal year, it could be starting a person on a full-time schedule halfway through the year.
Yeah. Right.
And so that, that avoids the problem of exploiting a part-time worker.
But it doesn't avoid the, the conflict next budget season when now we're budgeting.
No, that's very true.
No, and that's, that's... Why do you need them?
Right. I'd be, I'd be okay.
Well, I know, that's...
There's also the possibility that that person could be a seasonal person to...
Right. And we have lots of seasonal staff too. I mean, you know, I, we certainly try to be a good employer and do the right thing by our employees, but we also have to be mindful of, you know, we gotta hire someone, pay them benefits if it's really not what we need to deliver the services that we have. I mean, that's, are we, you know, so there's that too. So it's, um, you know, I mean, I think when...
I would push back on the idea that any part-time position is a bad thing. I know people who would like to, who, you know, are taking care of kids or have other commitments or whatever, who would like a part-time position. That's not, it's not inherently a horrible thing to do as an employer to have a part-time position.
I think if it's a part-time position where the scope of work is limited enough that you can do that job, part-time, I'm not convinced it is in this, this case.
Yeah. Well, I think if you delay hiring them, it could be.
You could.
Um, anyone do your thoughts on this? I'm just counting noses right now.
I mean, I guess, I hear Jeff saying that it's, they've been understaffed for a while and I see that he's retiring and I know that they have more and more work and we're adding more parks. So I think we should, Rosie.
I believe though that we have run into, um, Jeff selecting priorities that aren't the council's priorities in the past. That's something that this department director does. And I don't necessarily know that a new person would prioritize the same things that this department director has. And so I would be curious to see how that played out, um, because I do think that there are things that Jeff spends his time on that are wonderful things, but aren't necessarily the priorities of this council. And so I don't, I don't have a great sense of that, but that's my, my feeling.
He works for the Parks Commission, unfortunately not as director.
No, that's not true.
That's not.
He does answer those questions.
Well, he does, but the Park Commission, I mean, I said in the meeting that they direct his work. Anyway.
So my, my hesitation team still is that, uh, the tax rate increase is over four percent, which is not good. So, uh, we still have not yet talked about, um, uh, the citizen survey, and I think we need to probably revisit the art synergy funding. So, but I'm not sure that we've really made a decision on this part of it either. So, well, unless, cause unless, uh, you know, there, you're, there are four of you that would like to keep the full-time parks position, but then I'm gonna say I, I can't go for, um, necessarily adding money to, um, beyond the twenty thousand for housing. And is that, are you okay with that?
And that if, if, I'm sorry.
So, so if you, if you...
We now have fifty for housing. What do you wanna do with it?
Well, that's only if it's that, um, I, I would, I would take, if you, if you add the full-time position for the parks, let me take the housing back down to twenty.
Twenty total.
Total.
Yep.
You're gonna exchange the part-time for the full-time?
Yeah, I would, right, I would take, I would go for...
This might be helpful in your processes there is collectively, now that you've seen the range that you're talking about, is there a number you'd like to hit? And then, and then work to that.
Does anybody else have a number, a number that you have in mind?
I didn't come into this with a number I had in mind, but, uh, it, where we are right now adds neatly to a one hundred dollar tax bill increase for a typical house, which...
That's without the library or anything else that's on there?
Oh, libraries in there.
The library's in there, yeah.
They're additional?
And that doesn't seem like a bad number to me.
It feels like a lot.
It feels like a lot. When you, I mean, I guess translating that to rent and I, I'm, you know, I, I'd be probably more fortunate than most, but it just...
Yeah. So what would you propose to remove?
I just wanna say, I, um, I know that I am probably unusual in the general run of people in this, but that, that doesn't really feel like a lot to me. I think that all of the things that we are, just, just because all of the things that we're doing feel absolutely worthwhile to me. I would much rather spend money on all of these things than tons of things that I end up spending money on as it is now. So I, yes, it's huge, but I just...
I mean, for, at least for myself, until the relatively recent, I mean, a hundred dollars is the difference between like eating for two weeks or not eating. And, and, you know, I know that there's, it's expensive to live in Montpelier and, you know, I, I think Polly sort of hit the, the nail on the head with that things actually haven't really gotten any better in terms of affordable housing. We're working on it, you know, but things are, are gonna...
The demand keeps going.
Get worse before they get better, but I just, a hundred dollars to me is not...
Um, other thoughts? Is this number, do you, would you agree that four percent is too high?
What if we did forty thousand for the housing trust fund? The whole housing trust fund? I know that's not the, the same. It's still, there's still two awards that could be portioned at ten thousand or, you know...
We could take some money from the art fund.
For, and...
We could take from housing, take it from the other two.
Okay, well, just remember you have sixty already in the base and then the additional fifty. So you're starting with seventy-five.
Oh, so...
So this is on top of that.
That's on top, yeah. And the seventy-five can be apportioned.
Seventy-five, no, that's committed.
That's committed to the...
That's committed, okay. So right now, it's just the question of...
So anything that's seventy from, so at seventy-five, it's essentially zero for anything else for this year.
So another forty for that and another, so in art synergy, so and they asked for fifty?
Yep.
So if we did twenty...
Just to, just to give you perspective for, you know, I think Jack was good to mention the, the tax bill thing, you know? The, before you get into these options, just to give you perspective, we were at fifty-four dollar average increase. So, and now it goes to a hundred. So just people, that's, all of this here is an extra forty-six dollars on the average tax bills. So...
Annual, not you really pay, but like annual.
It's your annual, so eight dollars a month.
Twenty-five dollars a quarter.
Right. Eighteen bucks a month.
When we talk about this though, we have to remember that we are, we're talking about folks who are our income status, but we're also talking about folks who are on fixed income, who are not getting a four percent cost of living increase this year.
Or if they are, it's being eaten up by other things.
And, and it's on top of twenty-five hundred dollars that they're paying now.
So can we, uh, how, so actually you put out, what if we...
Forty and twenty.
Yeah, forty and, and twenty for, for arts. How do you feel about those changes, team?
I'm okay with the forty. I don't like the twenty.
I would go even more in the arts if we needed to.
Oh, you mean cutting it?
You'll cut it more.
How do you feel, Rosie?
I'm great cutting it.
Donna?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, so let's put in forty and twenty. And so where are we at?
Four dollars less.
That's three, three point eight nine instead of...
I might look at the actual number. It's worth four bucks.
Well, um, we also have not yet talked about the citizen survey.
It has three votes.
Has three votes.
Taking away my vote?
I mean, I think it could have some real value to for us to, to get some information about the community, get plan.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanna note that Bill has refrained so far from, from putting an X on the citizen survey up here, so that's not even on our...
Well, cause you didn't, cause I'm only putting the X's when you...
I get it. I think you're right not to do that, but...
We have five thousand this year though.
So the plan, Mike, plan, assuming we have the funds to do it this year, is to, to fund it this year out of one-time money so that we actually have the information this year. And then this was to set five thousand dollars a year for the next three years to do it in three years. So, uh, but you, depending on the status of our fund balance, that would be something I wouldn't do if we didn't, you know, if I didn't feel comfortable with it. But, but then it would be putting it off. So, you know, I mean, it's not the end of the world if you, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna go to the floor for five thousand dollars for survey compared to some of the other stuff. I think we ought to do it, but, you know, we might be able to find it in the budget somewhere too, you know? So I'm not gonna worry about that too much.
Okay. How are we feeling about three point eight nine? What, what else would you trade there if I was you?
I'm just trying to think back to the conversations they had about art synergy. So in terms of projects that were on the horizon and I don't have that stuff in front of me. Well, one, there are, there are grants available, right? Like in, because some of these are brick and mortar type installations, right? Like some of them...
Probably any installation is gonna go after grants and this becomes match money. But we are looking at some art for one Taylor Street that we would, they would want to do as a first, that they mentioned they can do as a first project if there was funds.
For the garage.
For the garage.
One Taylor's already done.
For the garage. Yes, sorry. Yes, thank you.
And I would just say that, um, I do think that, that public art is, as the, the plan said, it's, it's how we present to the world. And that is, and to ourselves, it's how we kinda know who we are. And if we want to be seen and known to ourselves as, you know, nickel and diamond, uh, our, our public face. But I, I think that, that...
But I, I think that, that, uh, I'm not gonna be able to argue this as strongly as I feel it.
So forgive me, forgive me the twenty, that's beginning, yes?
It's, uh, I would say it's a weak beginning, I'll take it, but I think we should really do more.
Every year twenty.
An additional twenty every year.
Oh dear.
Well, they asked for fifty, so.
Which, and I think that, honestly, I think that that is a reasonable level for the kinds of, for the kinds of things that we would want.
Um, I just want to check in, or, um, maybe I, I thought I heard the answer was no, but are we happy at three point eight nine percent? Or do you want to try to?
Would put the twenty-five back in.
I want to go lower, but I also only put one mark on the line.
Why mark everything? Rosie and I can just hammer this out.
Um, other, other thoughts, team? I, I would like to go lower as well, but, um.
What did you just take out?
Well, I, I put the twenty-five in just to see where, where that ended up, but I didn't really have any authority to do that, so.
It's ninety-eight dollars.
It's worth it, it's a twenty, at least it was a twenty and a half, right?
Thank you.
Three point nine four.
Well, yeah, I thought that, um.
Where, where were the numbers, if we put the housing trust fund at thirty-five?
At thirty-five?
And if we change the, the art back to twenty? And then change the art back to.
Oops. Ninety-five instead of ninety-six?
Oh, but I don't have to ask for that though, thirty-five?
Well, this isn't on top of.
Well, that's, so that's what, that was the initial amount that we had for the Christchurch was twenty and then we had another.
Sixty.
Sixty, so it's, it's more than we initially had in there for Christchurch, but it's only ten thousand dollars more.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
Forty thousand you could possibly do, what for new?
Well, if you do them at ten thousand dollar, if you do that as, as a ten thousand dollar, you know.
That's two.
Do four new homebuyers when it was forty.
Right, but if that's, if you, if you funded them at ten thousand dollars, but if you did like seven, five, that would give you one X, you know, or if you did five thousand or.
Right.
Yeah, but.
Prices of our house.
I think they already reduced them to seven thousand five hundred.
Okay.
That's, that's where they're.
I think that's right, yeah.
So, so team, I, I would, to, to meet my own goals, sorry, we're running out of time and, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, unless you're okay with going a little bit more, but, uh. I mean, I, I would be willing to, to, to get this number down a little bit. I'd be willing to say, what if we didn't hire the person, the facilities director in July, but in, uh, September? Of, like, what if it wasn't a hundred thousand dollars, what if it was?
Well, how long will the process take to get the person, to get the grant and get the person to, like, obviously we'd have to do an RFP.
I don't know, when's the planning grant time? Municipal planning grant for.
Uh, planning grant applications are due at the, usually at the end of September or the end of October, they kind of shift, shuffle them around.
They'll still have a go.
The money isn't available till January.
So that.
Then there's an RFP process, so usually you don't have your consultant onboard till March.
So that might make sense then though, if, if the grant application period closes in September or October, we onboard someone in August, September, that means they're part of, you know, albeit it would be a new person in a new position, but they could be included in that grant writing process, then.
No, it's closed already, right?
Yeah, the grant applications are in, in September. I would probably write the grant application, I mean, it would be great to have their, them available, but I can easily write a grant application. They're usually pretty open and flexible.
Right.
So it's not like I've locked into doing a certain thing, it's usually we're gonna get a grant for twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-six thousand dollars.
To do a full energy plan.
Energy plan for the community and it's kind of broadly laid out.
That application then would come, we would, you or whomever would work on that this coming September, September.
Right, this year.
September.
So maybe it would, I know it's not ideal to bump it out, but if we bumped it out, it's something where the new person could get familiar with whatever's been put together or potentially assist if they might have experience in doing that, you know, work with Mike to address that, then find out what their award is, then work to hire the consultant with the, you know, it just, that might be a, a segue into as opposed to the July start and then, I mean, it would save a little bit and it's.
Yep. Um, what if it, what if instead of at seventy-five thousand, what if it was, uh, uh, like sixty? It's not that much money to live here though.
Well, no, it would be, it would be.
It's starting, it's starting at the same.
It would be the, it would just be starting later, so basically it's twenty-five thousand per quarter. So, so if you.
So we could go, what if it was fifty thousand?
That would be our.
Right, that would be starting it.
Yeah.
Cause you already got twenty-five up above.
Looks like.
Sure.
Cause that might.
Twenty-five.
Right.
It's really, started at a hundred thousand and now it's only seventy-five.
That's, I, I feel good about that.
You weren't comfortable with that, but what about the other couch?
Yeah. Um, I could live with that budget.
It would just be mindful that it still does have the part-time.
What to twenty-five thousand?
The part-time.
Not to zero.
You know about a shit?
I mean, they'll increase. I would get a zero.
We did, but then they all sort of give it up. He wanted his daycare.
Don't go after single parents though.
You take that out and you come down to three point five five. I'm just kidding, he took his daycare out.
Nightcare, really.
Nightcare, right, childcare is what I call it, actually.
We could go back to revisiting that part or we, are, are we happy or where, how are we feeling right now, team? It's feeling really close.
I would still like our person to have, the park to have one full-time position.
What would you?
Keep saying that, you all.
No, I mean, I, I'm with you, I'm with you.
Would you want to increase the budget or give something up?
Increase the budget.
Yeah, that's right, I like that.
I'm not there. No, that's what I thought. He asked me, I said, no, we all surrendered, so we got a part-time, alright.
It, it, it sounded.
When trees start falling, then we'll get somebody.
I'm not, I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing enough people.
Can we just vote on that?
Well, well, I, I would say.
I've got the nods, I've got the nods.
I, I don't know that we have a clear count.
I, right, I'm not sure that we do have a clear count, so if you, so either would anybody be willing to increase the budget or cut something else to get a full-time parks person?
Well, let's see, if, if we.
You had thirty-five to that twenty.
Hang on, hang on.
If we, uh, change the parks from full-time to, or from part, part-time to full-time, well, that's adding another thirty-five thousand. What does that do to the bottom?
No, just adding fifteen to the part-time.
It's adding fifteen to the part-time, cause I would.
Cause I would.
No, it's adding an additional thirty-five.
The line says add to part-time fund.
Oh, okay.
So click an X on that and what does that do to the bottom line?
What I'm saying was just one full-time position is not adding the part-time.
Well, that is a full. That is the full-time.
That is, yeah.
Two part-times or one full-time.
Right.
That was what that was intended.
That's, that's what that means.
Thirty-five is a twenty, so it's fifty-five?
Right.
So that brings us back to.
It's because they become benefit eligible once they get to the full-time status, so we have to account for health insurance and retirement and all those.
Right, right.
So there's, the second half of the part-time status is more expensive.
But you, but you started with fifty, fifty-five for a management level and this is an entry.
No, this is, this is an entry level.
Yeah, with benefits.
You would, so Glenn, you would prefer this budget?
Well, this is with benefits.
You would benefit?
And Connor would prefer this budget?
Yes.
Ashley? I would, I would say no, but I understand how, I understand maths and so.
And Donna?
Yes.
So you'd prefer this budget?
Yeah.
With, with the increase up to three point eight percent.
Sure. Three point nine.
Depending on which number you were looking at, but yeah.
Yeah, three point nine for, uh, I think that's four people, I don't know who we want that. Well.
You can think about it.
I mean, we can still change it, I suppose, I'm not giving up for three point five.
So we'd be adding, just to be clear, what, what we're putting in, we'd be adding a new police officer, a new full-time tree person, a new full-time parks person, some more money into the housing trust funds, we'd be adding a total of, well, I'll see, we'd be adding thirty-five, fifty on top of the seventy-five already committed, so a hundred and twenty-five thousand to the trust fund, which is, it's only sixty now.
Yeah.
So I mean, dollar-wise, it's a doubling the housing trust fund.
Can I just ask a clarifying question now? So I see the facility director funding, but then I see the new facility director.
So we, the base budget, I'll clean this all up once we've decided what we're gonna do, but we'd put point two five of the facility directors start in April.
Okay.
So now you folks have added an additional fifty to that, so a total of seventy-five to start it in October.
Okay.
So it's still in there, it's not, it, it's a full-time position, but we're only putting three quarters of it in the budget this year.
I'm, I'm willing to be outvoted, if that's what people want. I don't want it, but that's okay. But I, I think I'm outvoted.
Yeah, I'm voting for stuff that I don't want too, so.
Well, would you, uh, is there a change that you would propose?
Well, not that we'd fly, Rosie.
I'd like to hear it anyway, just.
Well, I, I would put more money into the housing trust fund even, even still, but, but I, I think that this, for, for, uh, for this being published as the council's proposal, keeping in mind that people have two public hearings to come in and make their cases, should be something else, either higher or lower, I'm okay with having this be our proposal.
And I just want to add that, so I confirm with Bill, this includes the cut to the CIP increase to, of only twenty-five thousand. So we're not gonna gain anything with that down the road, that's done that.
Unless you take the other twenty-five.
Which we don't want to do.
Okay. Ashley, thoughts?
No? I have thoughts, but I'm still.
Four, okay. And they're steeping. That's okay, we're, we're okay with less than, or, or just under four percent.
Well, four of you are.
Four of you, yeah, four of you. Just want to check in, that's.
And scroll down a little bit, please.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
It did look nice, right? It looked so good.
Yeah.
I would so much.
So it's still under a hundred dollars. Yeah. For a typical house. Or for the median house.
Right.
Well, we can, we can start with this as the basis for our discussion next time, Donna?
Next week?
Next week.
Next week.
Next week.
We'll be there for votes over the week, so.
They're gonna ask us to add more to all these things.
Okay, we need a, we don't need a vote right now, or do we?
We do, because we could have a public hearing.
Yeah, this is, yeah, so you, you voted, set this as your proposed budget. This is not your adopted budget.
Do we need to go back to our?
No, you can do that right here.
I move to set this as our proposed budget.
I'll second.
Uh, further discussion. Uh, on favor, please, I.
I.
opposed?
No.
Hey.
Okay, so we will take this up again next time.
All too soon, Wednesday.
Yeah, next Wednesday. Okay.
Still, this is a good way to do it.
We're gonna consider the meeting, well, cause there's no, there was no.
There's no other business, oh, no other.
No other business, there's no council reports, there's no, anybody else's reports, so we're gonna consider the meeting adjourned.